To Nathan Wade, a resident of the town of Raymond in the county of Cumberland, the state of Maine, greetings. In the name of the state of Maine, you are hereby required to notify and warn the inhabitants of the town of Raymond qualified by law to vote in town affairs to meet at the Jordan Small Middle School Gymnasium in the said town of Raymond on Tuesday, June 3rd, 2014 at 7:00 PM, then and there to act on the following articles. Article 1, to elect a moderator to preside at said meeting.
Nominate John Robinson?
We have a nomination. Nomination and second for John Robinson. Are there any other nominations?
I nominate Katrina Sangster.
We have a nomination for Mrs. Sangster?
Second.
We have a second. Are there any other nominations? Can I have a motion to cease nominations?
Move to cease nominations?
Second.
And a second. Okay. This has to be a secret written ballot. So, can my clerks please come out? Anyone that wants to vote for either Mr. Robinson or Ms. Sangster, would you please hold up your yellow card and you will receive a ballot. If you need a pencil, can the clerks bring some pencils with you?
(laughing).
I'm sorry, Joe.
At least Katrina's a resident.
She's a resident.
(laughing).
Hello?
There you go.
I am Katrina Logan-Sangster and I would like to withdraw from this process, so thank you.
All right. Mrs. Sangster has withdrawn her nomination. Therefore, we will ask people to put a ballot in the box. I only need three if everybody doesn't want to jump up, but voting for John Robinson.
(inaudible).
Spoiled ballot.
It's all right. It's all right. They're not stupid, Joe. Non-resident.
Thank you, Laurie.
(inaudible).
I'm sorry?
My name is...
Hello?
There you go.
I am Katrina Logan-Sangster and I would like to withdraw from this process, so thank you.
All right. Mrs. Sangster has withdrawn her nomination. Therefore, we will ask people to put a ballot in the box. I only need three if everybody doesn't want to jump up, but voting for John Robinson.
(inaudible).
It's all right. It's all right. They're not stupid, Joe. Non-resident.
Done, man?
(laughing).
(inaudible).
Thank you, Laurie.
I generally start the meeting off with a pledge of allegiance, so if you'd all stand and...
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, invisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Quick sound check. Can everyone hear me in back? Before we get started with the body of the meeting, State Representative Mike McClellan has a announcement. Where's Mike?
Thanks, John. Good evening. I'm Mike McClellan. I live on Pismar Mountain Road in Raymond and I am the state rep for what's called House Seat 103 currently. It includes Raymond and Fry Island, Mostopol, and a little bit of Standish. And I guess I'll just go right to the announcement. And this is from the state of Maine. Be it known to all that we, the members of the Senate and the House of Representatives, join in recognizing Louise Lester of Raymond on the occasion of her retirement as the town clerk for the town of Raymond. Mrs. Lester lived in Raymond since 1950 and began working for the town as its secretary in 1989. She became deputy clerk in 1996 and town clerk in 2001. We, the state of Maine, send our appreciation to Mrs. Lester on her many years of commitment to the community and to the state. We extend our best wishes to her on her retirement. And be it ordered that this official expression of sentiment be sent forth with on behalf of the 126 legislature and the people of the state of Maine. It's signed by President of the Senate Justin Alphon and the Secretary of the Senate Derek Grant, also by the Speaker of the House, Mark Eves, and the Clerk of the House, Milson McFarland, and was introduced by Representative Mike McClellan and co-sponsored by Senator Gary Plummer. And I just want to say to Louise, well, there she is, I know I'm going to miss you a lot, so God bless you and good luck on your retirement.[253.20][253.20](applause).
(inaudible) and tell you that I've had a wonderful experience working in Raymond and I'm not going away because of any volunteering I've done.
Thank you, Mike. Thank you, Louise, and thank you for all you do.
Just a couple protocol procedure rules to go over. If you haven't already, please silence your phone, just a simple courtesy. I would ask for unanimous consent of the body to allow non-residents to speak. Is there any objection? All right, thank you. I usually read the warrant, the article. I will go through, read any supplemental materials that see fit to read, and I'll ask for a motion and a second on that motion. And when we have the motion, please step up to the microphone, state your name, your residence, and please be concise and to the point on each article. I know there sometimes can be substantial debate, but please make it short and concise and stick to the article at hand. And we'll get started. Article number two. Shall the land use regulation map be amended as shown? The planning board recommends Article 2 and the selectmen recommend Article 2. There's supplemental material that goes along with it. Do we have a motion?
Make a motion to accept Article 2.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on Article 2? And as we go, please, I'd like a show of cards. I don't know if there are any non-residents in this area, but as far as cards go, I need to see the cards as your vote, so if you'd indicate yes when I ask for a yes vote, to raise the card nice and clear. If there's any question about the voting, I may ask to divide the room and have the clerks count out the votes, but at this point, I'll just go visually and ask for all those in favor of Article 2. And those opposed? Article 2 passes. Thank you. Article 3. Shall Articles 4F, 4C District Regulations Commercial District, 9C Off-Street Parking, 10F Performance Standards, and 12 Definitions of the Raymond Land Use Ordinance as adopted May 21st, 1994 and amended through June 4th, 2013 be further amended by adding the underscored language and deleting the language in strikeover type as shown below? The planning board recommends Article 3 and the selectmen recommend Article 3. You have a motion?
Make a motion to accept Article 3.
Second.
Article 3 has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of Article 3? And those opposed? Article 3 passes. Thank you. Article 4. Shall Article 5E7 Residential Growth Management of the Raymond Land Use Ordinance as adopted May 21st, 1994 and amended through June 4th, 2013 be further amended by adding the underscored language and deleting the language in strikeover type as shown below? The planning board recommends Article 4 and the selectmen recommend Article 4.
Make a motion to accept Article 4.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of Article 4? And those opposed? Article 4 passes. Thank you. Article 4. Shall Article 5E7 Residential Growth Management of the Raymond Land Use Ordinance as adopted May 21st, 1994 and amended through June 4th, 2013 be further amended by adding the underscored language and deleting the language in strikeover type as shown below? The planning board recommends Article 5 and the selectmen recommend Article 5.
Make a motion to accept Article 5.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on Article 4? All those in favor of Article 4? And those opposed? Article 4 passes. Thank you. Article 5. Shall Article 10B Authority and Classification of Site Plan of the Raymond Land Use Ordinance as adopted May 21st, 1994 and amended through June 4th, 2013 be further amended by adding the underscored language and deleting the language in strikeover type as shown below? The planning board recommends Article 5 and the selectmen recommend Article 5.
Make a motion to accept Article 5.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on Article 4? All those in favor of Article 4? And those opposed? Article 4 passes. Thank you. Article 4. Shall Article 5E7 Residential Growth Management of the Raymond Land Use Ordinance as adopted May 21st, 1994 and amended through June 4th, 2013 be further amended by adding the underscored language and deleting the language in strikeover type as shown below? The planning board recommends Article 5 and the selectmen recommend Article 5.
Make a motion to accept Article 5.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on Article 4? All those in favor of Article 4? And those opposed? Article 4 passes. Thank you. Article 4. Shall Article 5E7 Residential Growth Management of the Raymond Land Use Ordinance as adopted May 21st, 1994 and amended through June 4th, 2013 be further amended by adding the underscored language and deleting the language in strikeover type as shown below? The planning board recommends Article 5 and the selectmen recommend Article 5.
Make a motion to accept Article 5.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on Article 4? All those in favor of Article 4? And those opposed? Article 4 passes. Thank you. Article 5. Shall Article 10B Authority and Classification of Site Plan of the Raymond Land Use Ordinance as adopted May 21st, 1994 and amended through June 4th, 2013 be further amended by adding the underscored language and deleting the language in strikeover type as shown below? The planning board recommends Article 5 and the selectmen recommend Article 5.
Make a motion to accept Article 5.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on Article 4? All those in favor of Article 4? And those opposed? Article 4 passes. Thank you. Article 5. Shall Article 10B Authority and Classification of Site Plan of the Raymond Land Use Ordinance as adopted May 21st, 1994 and amended through June 4th, 2013 be further amended by adding the underscored language and deleting the language in strikeover type as shown below? The planning board recommends Article 5 and the selectmen recommend Article 5.
Make a motion to accept Article 5.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on Article 4? All those in favor of Article 4? And those opposed? Article 4 passes. Thank you. Article 5. Shall Article 10B Authority and Classification of Site Plan of the Raymond Land Use Ordinance as adopted May 21st, 1994 and amended through June 4th, 2013 be further amended by adding the underscored language and deleting the language in strikeover type as shown below? The planning board recommends Article 5 and the selectmen recommend Article 5.
Make a motion to accept Article 5.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on Article 4? All those in favor of Article 4? And those opposed? Article 4 passes. Thank you. Article 5. Shall Article 10B Authority and Classification of Site Plan of the Raymond Land Use Ordinance as adopted May 21st, 1994 and amended through June 4th, 2013 be further amended by adding the underscored language and deleting the language in strikeover type as shown below? The planning board recommends Article 5 and the selectmen recommend Article 5.
Make a motion to accept Article 5.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on Article 4? All those in favor of Article 4? And those opposed? Article 4 passes. Thank you. Article 5. Shall Article 10B Authority and Classification of Site Plan of the Raymond Land Use Ordinance as adopted May 21st, 1994 and amended through June 4th, 2013 be further amended by adding the underscored language and deleting the language in strikeover type as shown below? The planning board recommends Article 5 and the selectmen recommend Article 5.
Make a motion to accept Article 5.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded.
Second.
Article 5 is on page 11. I can, thank you. Yes. Article 5 is on the bottom of page 11. Again, we have a, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on Article 5? All those in favor? And those opposed? Thank you. Article 5 passes. Article 6 is on page 12, the bottom of page 12. Article 6. Shall Article 6C Appeals Procedure and 10C Site Plan Review Administration of the Town of Raymond Land Use Ordinance as adopted May 21st, 1994 and amended through June 4th, 2013 and Article 5, Articles 5 Preliminary Plan and 7 Minor Subdivision of the Town of Raymond Subdivision Regulations as adopted May 21st, 1994 and amended through June 4th, 2013 be further amended by adding the underscored language and deleting the language in strikeover type as shown below? The planning board recommends Article 6 and the selectmen recommend Article 6.
Make a motion to accept Article 6.
Second.
Article 6 has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of Article 6? And those opposed? Article 6 passes. Thank you. And Article 7 is on the bottom of page 17 and it goes into page 18. Nope.
Page 19.
You can see it's hard to follow along. Pardon me. Article 7 is on page 19?
I don't think so.
No, it is on...
17. 19.
Oh, yeah. Okay.
There's no shell. It starts with shell.
No, it is on page 19. Article 7. Shall Articles 15 Land Use Standards and 17 Definitions of the Town of Raymond Shoreland Zoning Provisions as adopted May 21st, 1994 and amended through June 4th, 2013 be further amended by adding the underscored language and deleting the language in strikeover type as shown below? The planning board recommends Article 7 and the selectmen recommend Article 7.
Move to accept Article 7.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on Article 7? All those in favor of Article 7? And those opposed? Article 7 passes. Thank you. Article 8 is on page 20. Shall Articles 15G Parking Areas and 17 Definitions of the Town of Raymond Shoreland Zoning Provisions as adopted May 21st, 1994 and amended through June 4th, 2013 be further amended by adding the underscored language and deleting the language in strikeover type as shown below? The planning board recommends Article 7 and the selectmen recommend Article 7.
Move to accept Article 7.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on Article 7? All those in favor of Article 7? And those opposed? Article 7 passes. Thank you. Article 8 passes. Thank you. Article 8 is on page 20. Shall Articles 15G Parking Areas and 17 Definitions of the Town of Raymond Shoreland Zoning Provisions as adopted May 21st, 1994 and amended through June 4th, 2013 be further amended by adding the underscored language and deleting the language in strikeover type as shown below? The planning board recommends Article 8 and the selectmen recommend Article 8.
Make a motion to accept Article 8.
Second.
Article 8's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on Article 7? All those in favor of Article 7? And those opposed? Article 7 passes. Thank you. Article 8 is on page 20. Shall Articles 15G Parking Areas and 17 Definitions of the Town of Raymond Shoreland Zoning Provisions as adopted May 21st, 1994 and amended through June 4th, 2013 be further amended by adding the underscored language and deleting the language in strikeover type as shown below? The planning board recommends Article 8 and the selectmen recommend Article 7.
Move to accept Article 7.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on Article 7? All those in favor of Article 7? And those opposed? Article 7 passes. Thank you. Article 8 is on page 20. Shall Articles 15G Parking Areas and 17 Definitions of the Town of Raymond Shoreland Zoning Provisions as adopted May 21st, 1994 and amended through June 4th, 2013 be further amended by adding the underscored language and deleting the language in strikeover type as shown below? The planning board recommends Article 8 and the selectmen recommend Article 8.
Make a motion to accept Article 8.
Second.
Article 8's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on Article 7? All those in favor of Article 7? And those opposed? Article 7 passes. Thank you. Article 8 is on page 20. Shall Articles 15G Parking Areas and 17 Definitions of the Town of Raymond Shoreland Zoning Provisions as adopted May 21st, 1994 and amended through June 4th, 2013 be further amended by adding the underscored language and deleting the language in strikeover type as shown below? The planning board recommends Article 5 and the selectmen recommend Article 5.
Make a motion to accept Article 5.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded.
Second.
Article 5 is on page 11. I can, thank you. Yes. Article 5 is on the bottom of page 11. Again, we have a, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on Article 5? All those in favor? And those opposed? Thank you. Article 5 passes. Article 6 is on page 12, the bottom of page 12. Article 6. Shall Article 6C Appeals Procedure and 10C Site Plan Review Administration of the Town of Raymond Land Use Ordinance as adopted May 21st, 1994 and amended through June 4th, 2013 and Article 5, Articles 5 Preliminary Plan and 7 Minor Subdivision of the Town of Raymond Subdivision Regulations as adopted May 21st, 1994 and amended through June 4th, 2013 be further amended by adding the underscored language and deleting the language in strikeover type as shown below? The planning board recommends Article 6 and the selectmen recommend Article 6.
Make a motion to accept Article 6.
Second.
Article 6 has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
All those in favor of Article 6? And those opposed?
Thank you. Article 6 passes. Article 6 is on page 12, the bottom of page 12. Article 6. Shall Article 6C Appeals Procedure and 10C Site Plan Review Administration of the Town of Raymond Land Use Ordinance as adopted May 21st, 1994 and amended through June 4th, 2013 and Article 5, Articles 5 Preliminary Plan and 7 Minor Subdivision of the Town of Raymond Subdivision Regulations as adopted May 21st, 1994 and amended through June 4th, 2013 be further amended by adding the underscored language and deleting the language in strikeover type as shown below? The planning board recommends Article 6 and the selectmen recommend Article 6.
Make a motion to accept Article 6.
Second.
Article 6 has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
All those in favor of Article 6? And those opposed? Article 6 passes. Thank you. Article 7 is on the bottom of page 17 and it goes into page 18. Nope.
Page 19.
You can see it's hard to follow along. Pardon me. Article 7 is on page 19?
I don't think so.
No, it is on...
17. 19.
Oh, yeah. Okay.
There's no shell. It starts with shell.
I just wanted to make sure we were on the same book.
Yep. No, it is on page 19. Article 7. Shall Articles 15 Land Use Standards and 17 Definitions of the Town of Raymond Shoreland Zoning Provisions as adopted May 21st, 1994 and amended through June 4th, 2013 be further amended by adding the underscored language and deleting the language in strikeover type as shown below? The planning board recommends Article 7 and the selectmen recommend Article 7.
Move to accept Article 7.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on Article 7? All those in favor of Article 7? And those opposed? Article 7 passes. Thank you. Article 8 is on page 20. Shall Articles 15G Parking Areas and 17 Definitions of the Town of Raymond Shoreland Zoning Provisions as adopted May 21st, 1994 and amended through June 4th, 2013 be further amended by adding the underscored language and deleting the language in strikeover type as shown below? The planning board recommends Article 8 and the selectmen recommend Article 8. Move to accept Article 7.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on Article 7? All those in favor of Article 7? And those opposed? Article 7 passes. Thank you. Article 8 is on page 20. Shall Articles 15G Parking Areas and 17 Definitions of the Town of Raymond Shoreland Zoning Provisions as adopted May 21st, 1994 and amended through June 4th, 2013 be further amended by adding the underscored language and deleting the language in strikeover type as shown below? The planning board recommends Article 8 and the selectmen recommend Article 8.
Make a motion to accept Article 8. Second.
Article 8's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on Article 7? All those in favor of Article 7? And those opposed? Article 7 passes. Thank you. Article 8 is on page 20. Shall Articles 15G Parking Areas and 17 Definitions of the Town of Raymond Shoreland Zoning Provisions as adopted May 21st, 1994 and amended through June 4th, 2013 be further amended by adding the underscored language and deleting the language in strikeover type as shown below? The planning board recommends Article 5 and the selectmen recommend Article 5.
Make a motion to accept Article 5.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded.
Second.
Article 8 is on page 11. I can, thank you. Yes. Article 5 is on the bottom of page 11. Again, we have a, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on Article 5? All those in favor? And those opposed? Thank you. Article 5 passes. Article 6 is on page 12, the bottom of page 12. Article 6. Shall Article 6C Appeals Procedure and 10C Site Plan Review Administration of the Town of Raymond Land Use Ordinance as adopted May 21st, 1994 and amended through June 4th, 2013 and Article 5, Articles 5 Preliminary Plan and 7 Minor Subdivision of the Town of Raymond Subdivision Regulations as adopted May 21st, 1994 and amended through June 4th, 2013 be further amended by adding the underscored language and deleting the language in strikeover type as shown below? The planning board recommends Article 6 and the selectmen recommend Article 6.
Make a motion to accept Article 6.
Second.
Article 6 has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
All those in favor of Article 6? And those opposed? Article 6 passes. Thank you.
Article 7 is on the bottom of page 17 and it goes into page 18.
Page 19. Excuse me.
You can see it's hard to follow along. Pardon me. Article 7 is on page 19?
I don't think so.
No, it is on...
17. 19. Oh, yeah. Okay. There's no shell. It starts with shell.
I just wanted to make sure we were on the same book.
Yep. No, it is on page 19. Article 7. Shall Articles 15 Land Use Standards and 17 Definitions of the Town of Raymond Shoreland Zoning Provisions as adopted May 21st, 1994 and amended through June 4th, 2013 and Article 5, Articles 5 Preliminary Plan and 7 Minor Subdivision of the Town of Raymond Subdivision Regulations as adopted May 21st, 1994 and amended through June 4th, 2013 be further amended by adding the underscored language and deleting the language in strikeover type as shown below? The planning board recommends Article 7 and the selectmen recommend Article 7.
Move to accept Article 7.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on Article 7? All those in favor of Article 7? And those opposed? Article 7 passes. Thank you. And Article 7 is on the bottom of page 17 and it goes into page 18. Nope.
Page 19.
You can see it's hard to follow along. Pardon me. Article 7 is on page 19?
I don't think so.
No, it is on...
17. 19. Oh, yeah. Okay. There's no shell. It starts with shell.
I just wanted to make sure we were on the same book.
Yep. No, it is on page 19. Article 7. Shall Articles 15 Land Use Standards and 17 Definitions of the Town of Raymond Shoreland Zoning Provisions as adopted May 21st, 1994 and amended through June 4th, 2013 be further amended by adding the underscored language and deleting the language in strikeover type as shown below? The planning board recommends Article 7 and the selectmen recommend Article 7.
Move to accept Article 7.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on Article 7? All those in favor of Article 7? And those opposed? Article 7 passes. Thank you. Article 8 is on page 20. Shall Articles 15G Parking Areas and 17 Definitions of the Town of Raymond Shoreland Zoning Provisions as adopted May 21st, 1994 and amended through June 4th, 2013 be further amended by adding the underscored language and deleting the language in strikeover type as shown below? The planning board recommends Article 8 and the selectmen recommend Article 8.
Make a motion to accept Article 8.
Second.
Article 8's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on Article 7? All those in favor of Article 7? And those opposed? Article 7 passes. Thank you. Article 8 is on page 20. Shall Articles 15G Parking Areas and 17 Definitions of the Town of Raymond Shoreland Zoning Provisions as adopted May 21st, 1994 and amended through June 4th, 2013 be further amended by adding the underscored language and deleting the language in strikeover type as shown below? The planning board recommends Article 6 and the selectmen recommend Article 6.
Make a motion to accept Article 6.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on Article 7?
All those in favor of Article 7? And those opposed?
Article 7 passes. Thank you. Article 8 is on page 20. Shall Articles 15G Parking Areas and 17 Definitions of the Town of Raymond Shoreland Zoning Provisions as adopted May 21st, 1994 and amended through June 4th, 2013 be further amended by adding the underscored language and deleting the language in strikeover type as shown below? The planning board recommends Article 8 and the selectmen recommend Article 8.
Make a motion to accept Article 8.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on Article 7? All those in favor of Article 7? And those opposed? Article 7 passes. Thank you. Article 8 is on page 20. Shall Articles 15G Parking Areas and 17 Definitions of the Town of Raymond Shoreland Zoning Provisions as adopted May 21st, 1994 and amended through June 4th, 2013 be further amended by adding the underscored language and deleting the language in strikeover type as shown below? The planning board recommends Article 6 and the selectmen recommend Article 6.
Make a motion to accept Article 6.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on Article 7? All those in favor of Article 7? And those opposed? Article 7 passes. Thank you. Article 8 is on page 11. I can, thank you. Yes. Article 5 is on the bottom of page 11. Again, we have a, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on Article 5? All those in favor? And those opposed? Thank you. Article 5. Shall Article 10B Authority and Classification of Site Plan of the Raymond Land Use Ordinance as adopted May 21st, 1994 and amended through June 4th, 2013 be further amended by adding the underscored language and deleting the language in strikeover type as shown below? The planning board recommends Article 6 and the selectmen recommend Article 6.
Make a motion to accept Article 6.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on Article 7? All those in favor of Article 7? And those opposed? Article 7 passes. Thank you. Article 5. Shall Article 10B Authority and Classification of Site Plan of the Raymond Land Use Ordinance as adopted May 21st, 1994 and amended through June 4th, 2013 be further amended by adding the underscored language and deleting the language in strikeover type as shown below?
...Raymond, and I think there will be members of the Planning Board who will agree with me that the issue was not about changing the definitions of parking areas in the Shoreland Zone, it's about the uses in the Shoreland Zone. The uses that are described in a chart of the Shoreland Zone are antiquated, inadequate, and not appropriate for the Shoreland Zone. The Planning Board had an opportunity, and several members asked, that before we deal with definitions, which is in this particular article, defining ordinance, that we first deal with the faulty uses table of the Shoreland Zone. Our contract planner and legal counsel deferred and suggested that, in this particular case, we went in for a brake job and that we should put a new motor in the car. So, that's where we are today. This is a poor ordinance, as was the Residential Growth Management Ordinance, which some of you probably didn't know was Article Four and was voted on before you even knew. That was an ordinance that was put into place in the Town of Raymond to restrict residential growth, because we were all absolutely sure, based on the data, that Raymond was the fastest-growing town in Cumberland County, and we just had to prevent people from moving into town. So, despite the better efforts of some elder statesmen in the room, the town meeting, in its faults and glory, passed a growth management ordinance several years ago, which tonight we just repealed in total. It's very similar to the conditional zoning that happened on Raymond Hill. We came to a town meeting, we all said, because the leadership of this town said, "We ought to have U.S. Cellular and have conditional zoning for Raymond Hill," and two years later we were back at this town meeting repealing the conditional zoning for Raymond Hill, because the citizens of the Town of Raymond were taken advantage of by U.S. Cellular and others. So, in that regard, I heartily recommend that this be rejected. I believe there's many other options that the Planning Board would be able to look at going forward in the future, the first being the uses table in the Shoreland Zone. Thank you.
I know there are now people that like to speak, probably the easiest thing to do is to form a line in the center. Come on up, ma'am.
Hello, my name is Barbara Lovell. I live at 77 Wild Acres in Raymond, and I ask your permission, Mr. Moderator, to read for two residents, voters, and abudders who cannot be here tonight. I have a letter from them.
If it's short?
It is short.
Thank you.
To all, we own a residence on Raymond Cape, abutting the proposed Fry Island parking lot. We had listed our home and property for sale and had frequent parties interested in putting offers on the property. In numerous cases, when the purchasers learned of Fry Island's proposed parking lot project, they withdrew interest because of it. We expect that other property owners trying to sell their properties could have similar experiences to ours. Obviously, other potential sellers can be faced with the same situations. Our experiences demonstrate and make clear that the proposed project will have a very negative effect on the value of properties in the southern Cape area. These concerns have been expressed early in the Fry Island application process by many property owners. Now, there are facts to support them. Cape residents provide the Town of Raymond with high proportion of property tax revenues. Fry Island provides relatively very little, diminishing the values of Cape properties by acceding to Fry's demands for off-island parking benefiting only Fry Island, no benefit to Raymond. It's unclear why Raymond's governing body has been so non-supportive of Cape residents' concerns. Fry Island's long-term plans and motives and extensive parking facilities on the Cape were clearly presented in the first Planning Board hearing in July 212. Since then, their strategy may have changed, but we do not believe their long-term goals have. Unfortunately, the changes to the Shoreland Zone parking provisions that the Board of Selectmen are putting forth for a town vote on June 3rd tonight also appear to provide an avenue that would assist Fry Island and any other opportunists that would choose to do unjust damage to the Cape. Submitted by Jacob Rollins and Lacy Rollins, 478 Cape Road. Thank you very much for your time.
Please stand up to the mic.
Bruce Sanford, 222 Mountain Road here in Raymond. I am a member of the Planning Board. I thought it might be useful to relate briefly a little bit of the history and the thought process behind the Planning Board of how this article came about. Changes in any of the regulations that we are guided by are incremental and they're made over time. It's important to remember that any applicant who comes before the Planning Board is going to have to have his application judged by the regulations that are in place at the time that he makes his application. In review of applications, not just Fry Island, but other applications that come before us, things in the language, in the statutes that may need clarification, items of definition that are unclear, conflicts in language between different areas of the ordinances become apparent. The reason that the parking per se was looked at is that there was concern in the business commercial district that parking restrictions for side setbacks were too restrictive. Well, we couldn't look at just the commercial district for parking regulations, we needed to look at parking regulations across all the ordinances to make sure that there was synthesis between things that were questioned and things that didn't line up properly. Part of the review involved the Fry Island application. I've done a little bit of a quick statistical analysis of parking to give an example of how this proposed regulation is more restrictive rather than less restrictive. If you had a 100 by 100 square foot parking lot, 10,000 square feet, at 400 square feet per car, 100,000 square feet, excuse me, that would accommodate 250 cars in that area. If you had pods that only had a maximum of 50 cars apiece, or 20,000 square feet separated by a 50-foot driveway, it would take you 2.25 times the amount of gross acreage in land to park the same number of cars that are currently allowed in a single parking lot without driveways between them and without buffers around the parking areas. So, that's an example of why this is more restrictive. The issue that we face in the Planning Board is trying to balance not only due process to an existing applicant, but not to put restrictions on regulations that we must be guided by, that you folks actually vote on and set up for us, that unreasonably deny the possibility of a future applicant in a completely different application being barred from doing something that, by any stretch of reason, he should be allowed to do. The Boy Scouts is a good example of a Shoreland zoning, I guess you could call it a business in a way, they're in the business of raising young men, but they're in the Shoreland Zone. They have parking on both sides of the major access road that leads to their camp. We don't want to put the town in the position of somebody who has a reasonable business usage from developing parking on the other side of the street from where his main business use is located, and by completely barring all parking in the Shoreland zoning, other than as simple accessory usage, we would be setting the table to be doing exactly that. So, what we're trying to do is to tighten parking restrictions to more adequately reflect the true nature of the Shoreland Zone without denying all future applicants what may be their own due process rights. We're also trying to tighten up language and definition of independent parking facilities in which the parking lot has no other use than just being a parking lot are no longer to be allowed in the Shoreland Zone as part of the article. We have better defined what the different parking standards are in the article. Other things that we are going to be considering this coming year, is another example of things that change over time, is the use of the word municipal. We're going to be trying to tighten that up to mean of, by, and for the Town of Raymond, so that another municipal entity, whether it's the Town of Prescott, who wants to buy land on the Cape to load flat beds of potatoes off of, as an example, would not be allowed to do that. So, it's an incremental process. We do the best we can, taking existing due process for current applicants and the possibility of future needs in place without simply shooting everything in the head by saying, becoming the land of no and not allowing any use at all.
Bob, you want to add anything to that?
Hi, good evening. Robert O'Neill, Spring Valley Road. I'm the chairman of the Planning Board, and I just, Bruce kind of wrapped this up really nicely for you, but just real quickly as to what you're voting for this evening, the parking in the Shoreland zoning isn't authorized use of the development of that property. So, there is nothing that the Planning Board can do that stops the authorized use of development of a property. So, if you are voting no tonight, which against this ordinance, you're voting against the ordinance that's, the warrant that's being proposed to give the Planning Board more guidance as to how that property is to be developed. The default to that, if you vote no and turn the warrant down, then we default back to the warrant that is in place right now, which authorizes parking in the Shoreland zoning district without any of those restrictions that Bruce was talking about as far as density, as far as lighting, as far as any of those concerns. So, I would urge you to think carefully. A yes vote is going to place some restrictions on that development, on how a property owner can develop that property for parking. A no vote is going to default back to the ordinances as they stand right now, which has very limited guidance on how a parking in the Shoreland zoning can be developed. Thank you.
Peter Levitt, 2 Levitt Road. With all due respect to the Planning Board, I have some working knowledge of dealing with the land use ordinances in the Town of Raymond. I think we're a little bit unique in having both a land use ordinance and a Shoreland ordinance. That makes it a little bit confusing at times, but the bottom line is this, as far as the comprehensive plan is concerned, you look both at the language and the intent. The current ordinance is flawed, the proposed new ordinance is flawed. Never, in my estimation, was it ever the intent of the Shorelands ordinance to have the potential for 150 paved parking lot in any Shoreland Zone in the Town of Raymond. Thank you.
Senator Allen, resident of Raymond. I believe, I think it was Mr. Stanford that spoke about denying commercial uses at the parking lot on Fry's Island. I want to bring your attention to something that is probably more apt to cause a major problem in town, and that is using the Bridge Street and Mill Street Bridge for commercial operations. Now, there's quite a lot of traffic on Mill Street. I've talked about this before. The company had been notified last year, I know of, and they promised that they would not do it without putting out some sort of safety regulations so that somebody doesn't run into a tank of being filled with water. This year, they don't seem to even let anybody know they're going to do it, and they're making no, they're making no concerns about having their trucks marked or road marked so that somebody knows that that bridge is being tied up. And I think this would probably fall under the Shoreland zoning as well as just regular regulations for safety on the highway. Thank you.
Sarah Allen, also Gay Street, Raymond. My also concern is with this pavement of parking lots that we seem to be talking about in concern with the Mill Street Bridge. There is a parking lot down below the bridge that holds probably four cars. If anybody has traveled Mill Street during fishing season, or any time during the summer, it is a hazard to anybody who travels it, not only with the kids swimming there, but the amount of boats, boat trailers, cars, and anybody else that wants to collect there to even travel Mill Street. Does this mean that you're going to pave the edges of the road so more traffic can park there? The road is already hazardous, but by the sounds of this, you're going to pave any parking lot you can to park more cars. This is not a wise plan. I think the plan is flawed and needs to be looked at a little bit better.
Jessica Fay, 141 Spiller Hill Road. I picked a really bad night to try to overcome my fear of public speaking. I'm here, I'm not really in favor of Article 8, but I'm not against Article 8. I think, right now, there are no design standards for parking lots in the Shoreland Zone, and like Chairman O'Neill said, if we vote against Article 8, there will still be no standards for parking lots in the Shoreland Zone. Article 8 does give us some design standards, and folks that want to do development, it gives them, it lets them know what the expectations are of that development. I don't think there should be large paved parking lots in the Shoreland Zone. I don't, I agree with both Mr. Levitts that it seems like it's against the comprehensive plan, but the way the ordinances are written now, it's allowed. The town's attorney has given her opinion, it's allowed. It's not going to be not allowed, at least not in the near future. So, what I think we should do is at least put some limits on it, make it more protective than what it is, and maybe use that as a jumping off point to come up with some better standards, and maybe without a lot of negative energy, really kind of look at the issue and come up with something that's going to work going forward for the town. Thanks.
Dennis Morris Anderson Road. I have a question. I don't know if it's Planning Board or Code Enforcement, but I don't think anyone sitting in this meeting wants a commercial parking lot anywhere outside of a commercial zone. What I'm curious of, you gave an example of Boy Scouts, could you use the girls' camps that have been down there for 100 years? Those parking lots are used to go to a place that's a primary destination. The Boy Scouts go to camp, they go to the buildings that are there. We're talking about a parking lot designed to park just vehicles. What I'm wondering about is, is there a way to change the ordinance or clarify it that the parking lots on the, in the water district, or the land use, or whatever word you want to use, parking lots are designed to park a vehicle when you're headed to a place of destination on that property, as opposed to in the Town of Raymond to take a boat to Fry Island? I don't think anyone likes the idea. When I talked to Chris personally, I asked him if, you know, what's the benefit? And it was about limitation. I don't know why we can't do something that says you can't have a parking lot unless you're going to a place on that parking lot area, like the Boy Scouts go to the camp, or the girls' camp, they park and they go to the girls' camp. Why can't the town write an ordinance or do something that simply says the parking lots can't be commercial in its entirety? If the main facility was there, or if there was a facility on the land where they were parking the vehicles, I'd be the first one to say they did a good job for restriction. I don't know which person has to answer that question, but I'd like to know if the town could do that, and then find the balance that people are talking about. Thank you.
Is anyone from the Planning Board that wants to address that?
I can only speak for my own personal opinion in that an independent parking facility is not by statute, if this changes, it's going to be allowed in the Shoreland zoning provision. My own personal interpretation is that the Fry Island parking lot, since it's used by people who are going to take the ferry and go someplace else, it is used as an independent parking lot. It's not there for any other purpose except for people to park their cars. I do not consider it to be an accessory use. I cannot speak for other members of the Board as to how that might ever become adjudicated or an issue on an application. That's my own personal opinion. Thank you.
Article 8 has been moved and seconded. Is the mic on? Thank you. Can you hear me in the back? And is there any further discussion? Again, a vote by show of cards, all those in favor of Article 8? And those opposed? I believe Article 8 carries. Well, from a procedural standpoint, you can challenge the ruling of the moderator, in which case we can, I will be happy to have a, separate the room, I believe. All right, we need to have a vote? There's no discussion. All those for a, we'll have a separate, we'll separate the room, all those in favor? Yeah, challenge, challenge of the rule of the moderator?
No, no. No, 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 that was not. That wasn't clear. No, I don't want to challenge.
Is that Joe?
You're challenging the moderator's rule. All those in favor, challenge.
Yes. Right. There is a motion to challenge the ruling of the moderator, and that is what you're voting on. All those in favor to challenge the rule of the moderator? And those opposed? The motion fails. I'll rule it out of order.
Can't you just call?
Pardon me? No. I think it was actually pretty clear, and I was just being fair to the challenge. I do think the yeas had it pretty clearly.
If you want a vote, you have to ask for.
Those a, a challenge, the ruling of the moderator in the last vote, and we voted, and that failed, so Article 8 passes. Yeah, the, understood that the, I thought it was pretty clearly that Article 8 passed. I recognize that she challenged the ruling again. That was pretty clear, from a visual standpoint in the room, that that failed, therefore Article 8 passes.
Moving on to Article 9, to see if the town will vote to appropriate $15,000 from the Open Space Fund to donate to the Boy Scout Pine Tree Council for the purchase of a 30-acre parcel of land along the southeastern side of the Tenny River for conservation purposes. The Conservation Commission recommends Article 9, the Selectmen recommend Article 9, and the Budget Finance Committee recommends Article 9.
Make a motion to accept Article 9?
Second.
Twenty-three.
Twenty-three.
Article 9 is located on the page 23 on the bottom. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on Article 9?
Dryad Woods Road, I'm chairman of the Conservation Commission, and the next two articles, as folks are probably well aware, have to do with conservation in Raymond, and I believe largely the three main reasons why people have selected to live in Raymond, or for some of us, why we still live in Raymond. And those reasons are the exceptional water resources that we have in town, the excellent outdoor recreation opportunities, and the rural character. The Tenny River Project meets all three of those head-on and offers an exceptional conservation value opportunity for the town. I think the final point I'd want to make is that we have funds set aside already in our Open Space Fund for this, and I want to give some opportunity to Ann Gass to give a quick set of details just to get everyone a little more educated about it.
Thank you, John. My name is Ann Gass. I'm not a Raymond resident, I live in Gray, but I am a landowner in Raymond off of, on River Road on Panther Pond. My family has a camp there that they've had for over 100 years. So, this is a volunteer-driven project that dovetails really nicely with other planning work that has been done by the Town of Raymond Conservation Commission, as well as by other partners to, and the Tenny River has been recognized as a resource that needs to be protected for both its water quality and for habitat protection, and that's its primary purpose. This project is not, unlike the article, or the next article that you'll be voting on, this one is not so much about, you know, access to the public, it's really about resource protection. The Tenny, as you know, helps to supply Sevega Lake and the water supply for Portland, but it's also a significant habitat for a wide range of fish and birds and other wildlife. It also is, within a very short drive of Maine's major metropolitan area, is, offers a really lovely wilderness-feeling kind of space, and we're, this project will also protect that. The long-term goal is to protect the entire length of the Tenny River corridor between Crescent Lake and Panther Pond. And the partners involved in this now are, well, certainly, we're looking for the Town of Raymond to be a partner, but the Pine Tree Council of the Boy Scouts of America and the Lunaco Land Trust, which will hold the easement. And the, there will be no parking available for people to access this land. That's because River Road, on which it's located, is a private road, and there's no place to put a parking lot there. But the park, the public can use the land, the way that the Boy Scouts have generously allowed people to use their Camp Hines facility off-season, you know, if they treat it respectfully, they can walk through there, bike through there, you know, snowmobile through there, those kinds of things. And all those uses, including hunting, will be allowed on this land with the permission of the Pine Tree Council. I think those are my primary points. I'd be happy to answer any other questions if people have them.
Peter Levitt, 2 Levitt Road. Sorry. So, I'm all for protecting the environment, and I think I've got a history of doing that. Could I ask someone in town government to tell me how much money in property taxes the Boy Scouts of America Pine Tree and Council paid to the Town of Raymond in 2013?
Well, I'm assuming they're a nonprofit, so they probably pay zero.
Thank you, Joe. Okay. So, it might be described that the Boy Scouts of America are an organization dedicated to teaching morality, citizenship, and physical fitness to America's youth. Right? There's some thoughts that they're a homophobic, paramilitary organization that basically provides, I have speech, correct? You swore on the Constitution, right? Okay, all right, just checking. All right. All right. So, some would be of that opinion. As, I'd like you to stick to the article. Sure, I am. I think the Boy Scouts of America are directly going to benefit from taxpayer money, set aside or not, it's taxpayer money. So, please. So, that being the case, there's wide variations on opinions as to whether an organization like that would be supported or not. My greater question is, is the town at this point in time prepared to take land that is on the tax rolls and take it off the tax rolls, especially to benefit an organization that contributes no taxes to the Town of Raymond? Thank you.
Mr. Chair. Moderator. Do I have to go up there?
No, you can, as long as you have the microphone, you have the microphone.
I, I am. The mic is live. Joe reminded me earlier, so, Dana DeJardins, Six Four River Road. I live on the River Road year-round, and my question, and a lot of it has been unanswered by the people who are proposing this. The road repairs, the plowing, it's an ongoing thing. Currently, we have a quasi-association, we, which, where we chip in to repair the roads on the River Road. I personally plowed the River Road from Route 85 to my resident. I used to do the whole length of, of River Road, and then another resident decided that he, he would get somebody else that, you know, could, you know, get it done. And, you know, it's, it's one of those things. It's a, it's a big responsibility. I live there year-round. I take care and have pride in taking care of the road I live on. But yet, you get these groups like Lune Echo, and, you know, they're talking about all these wonderful things, but nobody's stepping up to the plate and writing a check to our quasi- road association. I just got my bill recently from my, the guy in charge of the road, and, you know, we'll pay it, it's not a problem, I, I always pay it, but there's a lot more work done there by individuals, and it's unseen, and it's, 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 there's no communication between this group, and yet, the Town of Raymond is willing to give him $15,000. And, you know, the, the problem with that is, I'd rather take that $15,000 and fix the potholes on Route 85. That's my opinion on that. Thank you.
Charles Levitt, East Raymond. Just to, to clarify a few points, there is a parking lot down off of, of River Road. I believe it's owned by the Boy Scouts, but it's also on a parcel of a piece of this land that is being transferred under this, this article. My question then is, and if that's regulated, and many times that's fenced off by the Boy Scouts, that if we're going to have this type of use, even though it's for preservation rather than for accessory use, but we're permitting hunting and snowshoeing and cross-country skiing, where are those people going to park? If there's no provisions made, anybody who's been down River Road, I think it's been called a luge at times in the wintertime, it's a mudhole during spring season, so my question is, besides parking at Mr. DeJardins' for $20 an hour, at his private parking lot, in the lot across the street, which has been cleared gratefully for him, besides that potential that will happen, where is the parking going to take place when people start to find, as they have with Rattlesnake Mountain? You can't go anywhere, even on tonight's news, Channel Eight, they were doing a sky cam and said if you're planning on hiking, you should go up to Rattlesnake Mountain. So, again, I'm neither for nor against this. I, I think if we have a, a plan in place, I think the Boy Scouts and Lune Echo Trust probably could have done this without our $15,000, but again, not a well-conceived idea or a thought through completely. Thank you.
Hi, Anne Gass, again, Gray, Maine. I just want to clarify that there, there is indeed a parking area off of River Road. It is a private parking area that the Boy Scouts, Scouts use for their summer camp purposes. And the, and the purpose of this project, I really want to reiterate, is for conservation purposes. Any, any other, you know, use of the property for, for other purposes is, is really, you know, very minor, and that is why we're not providing any parking associated with it. Its, its primary purpose and a really valuable purpose is for conservation, and, you know, habitat protection, water quality protection. So, I just wanted to clarify that point. And the Boy Scouts do also contribute to the maintenance of the River Road.
Kathy Goslin, 11 Eaglesview Lane in Raymond. I worked for the Boy Scouts of America for 20 years. I am a past camp director of Camp Hines back in the 90s, and then I was the camping and program administrator up until 2013. And no, yes, we are a nonprofit, we do not pay taxes, but we have over 10,000 people that contribute to the town's tax base with tourism. 10,000 people that visit this town every single year at Camp Hines. They stay in the local hotels, they purchase gas, they purchase food. You can ask the pizza places and the mosquito, how many of the scouts go down there and how many of the families. So, while we may not contribute to the tax base, we certainly contribute to the tourism. And they do. I authorize the payments every year for the road maintenance on the Tenny River Road. And while this project is about conservation, take the Boy Scouts out of the picture and canoe down the Tenny River, and see what a wonderful piece of property it is, that is. And then imagine it with 10 houses on that piece of land. What would you rather have? Thank you.
Article nine's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor of Article nine? And those opposed? Article nine passes. Article 10, to see if the town will vote to appropriate $30,000 from the open space fund, and additional $20,000 from the timber harvest funds, for a total of $50,000 towards the purpose of 347 plus or minus acres along Concica Road, including Pismire Mountain. I should know some of these road names, shouldn't I? Conesca? Thank you. Known as the Raymond Community Forest Project. Expenditure of these funds will be contingent on successful state, federal, or private foundation grant awards and local fundraising. The agreement to exercise an option to buy the land for $506,000 from the Hancock Land Company expires on December 31, 2014. The Conservation Commission recommends Article 10. The selectmen make no recommendation for Article 10. The Budget Finance Committee do not recommend Article 10. We have a motion. It's been moved and seconded. Thank you. Is there any discussion on Article 10?
John Rand, again. I'll keep this brief, because I know we've got a lot more material to go through, but like the Tenny Project, the Raymond Community Forest Project is an exceptional opportunity for the Town of Raymond. It has roots back to the 1989 Comprehensive Plan. It was brought into more focus in the 2004 Comprehensive Plan, and in our 2007 Open Space Plan.
John, just for the audience that may be watching or listening, can you speak into the mic? I know, I think they're just having trouble. Thank you.
Okay. In the 2007 Open Space Plan, this property, as well as a number of others, were targeted as valuable conservation land and, and recommended to be the, the efforts of preservation. What we get with the Raymond Community Forest Project essentially are four key conservation goals. That's what our commission does every last Tuesday of the month for nine months a year. Water quality protection, public access secured for recreation with exceptional views from the top of Pismire Mountain, habitat protection, and we also secure timber for the forest industry in perpetuity, out in time. I think another key piece of this vote tonight is that this, this vote tonight does not commit us to spending this money. Our commitment to going forward with the project is contingent on successful award of grants that have already been applied for, as well as the town approving action on the option agreement at the end of this year. So, there's really two steps before this project can go forward. Voting no tonight would shut the door on, on the opportunity, while we have approximately $250,000 in grant applications already in the pipeline and should be hearing on in the next several months. Raymond's contribution, which is always required, a town is always required to make a contribution to any state funds that come for land conservation, is approximately eight cents on the dollar. Our $50,000 contribution, again, most of that coming from monies already set aside in the open space fund, would be about 8% of the value of this property, a $600,000 property that Hancock Land has allowed for a $100,000 discount from market, and with state and federal grants and significant private fundraising that will need to take place. Our, our contribution as the town from the open space fund would be, would be $50,000. You don't get opportunities to buy land in Raymond at eight cents on the dollar very often. So, I know that there's probably some concerns among folks, looking at how the recommendations came from the various boards. I just want to say that we've worked hard with Lune Echo for about three years to bring this project to this voting point tonight, and if anyone is still undecided, I recommend they get themselves to the top of Pismire Mountain in the next week or two and go take a look.
Peter Levitt, Two Levitt Road. Just, why did Budget Finance not recommend? Why did selectmen choose not to make any recommendation?
Rol Folsen, Brook Road, Chairman of the Budget Committee. The, there was, it was, there was a number of discussions that went around about that, and, and some of it had to do with ownership of it and, and getting, tying in with Lune Echo and things like that. It was a, it was a fairly close vote, but ultimately, that was, the decision was made based on who was going to have the control over it and things like that.
Whether the town was going to own it or not?
Mm-hmm.
And, and I believe there's also alternate funding was suggested, possibly with some building sites that are not included in this, that are, that are part of this proposal? So, is, is that still part of the plan as an alternate funding for this?
First, to your point, Rolf, the, on the ownership, the way these models work is playing out currently in Bridgeton, Denmark, and Sebego with the Pearlie Mills Community Forest Project that Lune Echo is also managing. And in that project, it's three towns and 1,600 acres, and the way that, that worked was that Lune Echo purchased the property, and then will transfer the land to, largely to the Town of Denmark in that case, pending a, a town vote to do so. We would do, we would follow a similar model. If, if this option to, to purchase the land was exercised, Lune Echo would likely be the purchaser and, and the owner, and then would transfer the land to the town, obviously with our vote and, and permission. And so, that's how those, those models can play out, would likely play out. Peter, to your point, there are, I believe there are four lots as part of the Pismire Mountain side of the road that are created lots in, in the Town of Raymond, and there hasn't been any discussion at this point about how those may or may not be able to help finance the project. In my own mind, there's no reason that, that those discussions shouldn't be part of, of the financing of the project if, if we need to go that far. If the private fundraising effort doesn't get us to the finish line, that shouldn't be, shouldn't be ruled out in my mind, you know, to, if it's a matter of making the deal happen or not.
So, I guess, Mike, my question is, who would own those building lots? Where would the revenue go? Is that, is Lune Echo going to transfer it back to that, to the town? Or would Lune Echo take the, the profits from the sales of those building lots and, and put it toward making the deal work? Or, or how does that work?
Let me get back to you. All conjecture at this point, I think is all we could say, is that they could play into the successful completion of the project if, if we didn't have state funds, federal funds, and private fundraising that, that got us to the finish line. Too early to say how that would play out, but certainly it's an option.
And, and could I just answer to the selectman?
I think we do have another... Is there any, is there any comment?
I was a select board member who made the recommendation not to make a recommendation for this article. It was my opinion that I wanted to hear from this body what their pleasure was. I, I could not make a decision either way, as a, as a board member, what was good for Raymond. I have my personal views, but I wanted to hear from the people here, so.
Chris Sanford, Mountain Road in Raymond. I would like to speak in favor briefly of the ordinance. I think a lot of people in the room, including myself, have lived in Raymond considerably a long period of time, and we've all seen the slow urbanization of Raymond, as everybody wants to have their two, three, five acre parcel out in the woods. I would rather see 350 acres of Raymond set aside to go in tandem with the excellent waterfront recreation that we have available in the town, to make a nice, good-sized mass of land available for recreation and conservation. Can't say that all 350 acres will be turned into houses in the next 20, 10 or 20 years, because it's not all buildable land, but I think that the 350 acres will be better put to use than turned into slowly more housing development along the side of the hill and, and turned in 10 or 20 years into, you know, other 20, 30, 40, 50 housing lots with all of the costs that the town will incur in plowing and sanding and upkeep, and just general town services. I think it's a good deal.
I was on the earlier Comprehensive Plan, and this is the kind of property that we wanted to save. And how many in this room have actually climbed to the top of Mount Pismire? You didn't get poison ivy? I think it's a magnificent opportunity. We should not miss it.
Please stand up, and I know there are a number of people raising their hands. It's easier just to make a line, so they don't have to recognize people in the audience. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Karen Sanford. I live at 222 Mountain Road. My property actually fronts Conesca, and I live on Pismire Mountain, so this is very personal to me. I don't know... I don't know how many of you who live in my area, but there is a company out and about who is seeking leases for cell phone towers all along Pismire Mountain. I would prefer to preserve this area, to not have a cell phone tower, and if we can do so, my understanding is that if we've got this area preserved, they can't put a cell phone tower where it will impede the recreational views of the area. On top of that, if you think in terms of flying over this country and you see the fragmentation of our environment, if we can preserve a corridor of land and water to preserve the integrity of the biological species that are here, we will be better in the future and for our children and grandchildren as well. So, thank you. Please vote yes.
I'm Brian Richards, and you guys need a new view. I'm a new guy. I just retired here. I live at 82 Rosewood Drive on Crescent Lake, and my property abuts some of, it appears it abuts, some of the preserved land. But just let me give you just a few insights from mine. We bought the land in 97, and when we bought it at Hancock Lumber at that time, our understanding was that was timberland. That's not going to be developed. And then when we decided to build, we found out that, oh, wait just a minute, things kind of changed and they decided to have a development there of 13 houses, which is currently underway, and they have three houses now. We were not here at the time, but we weren't very happy about that. I contacted the planning board and I saw what the plan was. There's some more phases into this up on the other side of Kennesaw and all. From what I see from this project, and I appreciate the comments that came before me, for I came to Maine to be able to live in a, as my wife says, it costs a lot of money to live in paradise. And every time I look at my taxes, I go, yeah, honey, it costs a lot of money to live in paradise, but it is paradise to me. I like it. I'd like to keep the quality that we have. I think you have enough development. I realize there's always this conflict, but it seems to me that we have a window of opportunity here. A lot of work has already been done. People are compromising with, okay, Lune Echo will do this much, and Hancock will do this much, the town may do this much, but I would encourage you to think about what it's going to be in the future. Like I said, when I bought that, I thought, great, all of that is not going to be developed at all. And 12 years later, it was developed because things were changed. It was not set aside permanently. This appears to me, the way I read the project, that this would set this aside permanently. So therefore, this would be public use. So I would encourage you to think about that, and from my side, I certainly support this, and I realize I will have a lot of questions as it gets developed. Everything from where are you going to put that parking lot? I don't want it down where my place is. I want it up there on Kennesaw Road. Where's the access? Are they going to help pay for some of Rosewood Drive that Joe Bruno can tell you that we pay for with our association? There are a lot of little details, but the big picture, in my opinion, looks good. Looks like this is an opportunity that we really should take. So that's just from a newcomer and from a southerner. Okay?
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Maggie. That's my neighbor. I live at 84 Rosewood Drive, which, again, this very personally affects me selfishly, but I have a six-year-old son, and my dream for him is that he can grow up in a state that most of us got to experience, a state where they can run in the street, where they can see bald eagles flying over our house all the time, where deer are in our backyard. And when we bought our property eight years ago, we also were under the assumption that that entire area would not be developed. Hancock went in, cleared 13 lots, which there are three houses there now, but then there's like this giant empty tar pit thing. They cleared more woods area to the left, and, you know, it's an eyesore, but that could keep continuing if we don't protect this beautiful serenity that we have. And I think in a world where so few things are now held sacred, we should protect what we can while we can.
My name is Wayne Homecourse, and I would like to remind all these wealthy people who want to conserve the whole town that we have 1,100 acres in Morgan Meadow that nobody gets to use, or very few get to use. We got Tasseltop Beach, which we can't go to without paying. I'd like to see, I'm a conservative guy myself, but I'd like to see the next person that comes up here wanting to donate the town or grab all the land in town and see it set aside. I'd like to see them come with a plan where they have the money to buy it and donate it.
Brian Walker, Plains Road. By the way, Wayne, I'm not making that offer, just so it's very clear. I do think it's important, the Budget Finance Committee, of whom I'm a member, was split on the vote. I was for this. I think there's really three things that come to my mind on this, and I think it's important also to have somebody who does not have a, I'm not calling it self-interest, but an interest because they have proximity. I do not, and so I thought it was important to speak. The things that make Raymond unique have a lot to do with our natural resources. That's the water that we have, that's the views that we have from places like Pismire Mountain. It is the outdoors. That's the thing that gives us a point of difference, so that when someone's looking to find paradise, they find it here in Raymond. There are very few places and very few times where you can have a 10, 12x return on your money, and that's what this is. This is a small amount of money relatively, and I'm not belittling 50 grand, and believe you, if you watch the Budget Finance, I'm pretty careful with the buck. But this is a chance for us to utilize a sum of money, which will be multiplied by other, hopefully, other foundations, state and hopefully federal money, to get to a much larger pot of money, so we can preserve a significant amount of land that will be under the town control, unlike some of our other things like Morgan Meadows, which really is not, so that we can do more with it, make it more accessible, and really get the benefit of it and make it one of those things that makes Raymond unique. And lastly, I think I would point out that for those of you who are interested in the watershed, that area is a critical part of the watershed of Crescent Lake. Crescent Lake is an important part of the watershed of Panther Pond. Panther Pond is an important part of the watershed of Sebago. So we're really protecting an area and a much larger area than just the 300-plus acres. Thanks.
Greg Foster, 29 Ledge Hill Road. I simply would like to say that being the great capitalist that I am, I'd prefer to see that land in private ownership.
As one who has, oh, James Gass, Crescent Shore, as one who has John suggested hike to the top of Pismere Mountain, my wife and I did last year, and we looked down at Crescent Lake, and all we saw was sandbars. If we let this land be developed, we're going to see more and more sandbars in Crescent Lake.
Charles Levitt, East Raymond. This is a no-brainer. We're going to be faced with articles coming before us, budgetary articles, that are pretty much off the wall, similar to ball fields on wetlands over on Egypt Road. This particular opportunity that came before, and no decision from the select board means no leadership, and for the Budget Finance to recommend against it does not make financial sense. We didn't even have to go to the $30,000 in the open space fund. We just sold, and Greg was involved in that, $55,000 worth of timber off of lots that we have or in the process of selling in the town of Raymond. If this was a proposition, I was the CEO of an organization, and the division chief came to me and said, we just made $50,000, and we can buy 300 acres for $50,000 with compensation being made. And I'm glad to see that the Hancock Charitable Trust is now bellied up to the bar, which was the point I was trying to make earlier when we had these discussions, is that Hancock can do a service both to the town of Raymond and to the town of Casco. And they've made lots of money by being in business in both of these towns, and by them being a player in the charitable trust contribution to this, it's basically, as Brian has suggested, that it's $50,000, which could have been just a transfer of funds from the woodlot operations, wouldn't have even affected the tax rate. And we could have been a partner on this project. Now we've got dissension, we've got unclear motives that I see. We get mixed messages. We hear, well, we need more children in town, and we need economic development, but we want to protect the quality of place, but we'll pave Raymond Cape, but we won't save Pismire Mountain. We won't put, we'll put a cell phone tower on the top of Raymond Hill, but we'll protect the Pismire Mountain from cell phones. I think this town has to start getting a better identity and a better focus as to what it wants to do in the future and not be just confined to a meeting of about 120 people. Some of these issues should have probably been put to the ballot box on June 10th rather than at a town meeting. Town meeting could have been informative, could have had the same discussion, but more people should be involved than 120, same as when we get to the budget items. 120 people don't make town. Thank you.
Mr. Moderator. Yeah? I voted against this, the spending of this $50,000 for the sake of, I can't justify when revenues in town are down, why we should be spending capital on taking over property that is paying taxes. That $50,000, again, could be used to fill potholes on Route 85 and 121 and other Raymond roads. So far, if we vote this in, we're going to have 15,000 on the River Road and 50 on this. If, I, you know, my math is that's $65,000. Not going to fill potholes. We should have our priorities straight, and the reason I voted against it was because it's nice to get all this land, but if Hancock Lumber feels so adamant about making a donation, maybe they should give it to the town. Let's fix the potholes in our roads. Thank you.
Sandy Crowe, I live on Raymond Hill Road, 352, and I think this town has great resources, and I see them kind of slipping away over the years. I used to live on Tenny Hill, and when I bought a place there, there were probably five houses on the road or something, and now there's, I don't know, probably more than 100. And if we're talking about taxes, what about those taxes? You know, there's so much revenue coming in from people developing the town, and there are just a limited amount of, I mean, beautiful places that we can still claim for ourselves. As we build more and more, it's going to be harder and harder to get something like this accomplished. It's quite an opportunity that we would be losing. It's a beautiful, beautiful spot. It's got views, you can snowshoe or ski or hike. I mean, it's a wonderful spot for children and families to enjoy, and I'd hate to see it get lost. Also, there's wildlife, you know, there's coyote and deer. If we keep developing all these houses, where are they going to go, you know? They're just going to die off? So I think it's really a great opportunity, and I would love to see it happen. Thank you.
We've got to keep our schools filled.
Article 10 has been moved and seconded. We've had some discussion. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor of Article 10? And those opposed? Article 10 passes. There is no Article 11, so we'll be moving on to the budget warrant. Article 12, to see if the town will vote to authorize a selectman on behalf of the town to sell and dispose of any property acquired by the town for non-payment of taxes pursuant to the policy adopted by the selectman. As may be amended from time to time, the policy to remain consistent with state statutes and laws, and in all cases, conveyance to be made by municipal claim deed. The selectman recommends Article 12, the Budget Finance Committee recommends Article 12.
Make a motion to accept Article 12.
Second.
Article 12 has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of Article 12? And those opposed? Article 12 passes. Article 13, to see what date taxes will be due and to set an interest rate for unpaid amounts. The selectman recommends first half to be due October 31st, 2014, and second half to be due April 30th, 2015, with interest at 7% on any unpaid balances. The selectman recommends Article 13, the Budget Finance Committee recommends Article 13.
Make a motion to accept Article 13.
Second.
Article 13 has been moved and seconded. Do we have any discussion? All those in favor of Article 13? And those opposed? Article 13 passes. Thank you. Article 14, to see if the town will vote to set the interest rate to be paid by the town on abated taxes at 7% for the fiscal year. The selectman recommends Article 14, the Budget Finance Committee recommends Article 14.
Make a motion to accept Article 14.
Second.
Article 14 has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of Article 14? And those opposed? Thank you. Article 14 passes. Article 15, to see if the town will vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to dispose of town-owned personal property with value not exceeded $35,000, not to exceed $35,000. The selectman recommends Article 15, the Budget Finance Committee recommends Article 15.
Motion to accept Article 15.
Second.
Article 15 has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of Article 15? And opposed? Article 15 passes. Thank you. Article 16, to see if the town will vote to authorize a selectman to borrow from or appropriate from the undesigned fund balance surplus as they deemed advisable to meet the unanticipated needs of the community that occur during the fiscal year. The selectman recommends amount.
Undesignated. Motion to accept Article 16.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on Article 16?
Mr. Moderator, my name is John Ewalt. I live at 121 Wild Acres Road. I am a non-resident. I'm a resident of the state of Maryland. I address the board to ask a couple of questions and then make a statement. Number one, what is the anticipated undesignated fund balance at the end of the year? Does anyone?
If this budget passes.
Yes.
Mr. Moderator, if this budget passes the way it's written, it'll be about close to 1.9 million.
Surplus.
Surplus.
Okay. I don't know if town officials are aware, or if folks in the town are aware, but Fry Island's town officials have recently approved spending $30,000 in legal fees to win their court appeal of our planning board's recent disapproval of their parking lot plan. Is there another line item in the budget that could be used to fund the defense of the planning board's decision before using these surplus funds? Does anyone have an answer to that?
The general legal fund is available.
Okay, and what is the amount in that fund? I missed.
40,000, I believe. Roughly, yeah. We're going to get to that in administration.
Okay, okay, good. So we do have money then. My concern is that Fry Island is already using a 25-acre lot in Raymond Cape as an outdoor sand and gravel yard, and they have plans and have plans before the planning board to build a parking lot, and they've also discussed with their residents future plans for putting a warehouse on this 25-acre lot. Spending money now to block Fry Island's attempts to build a parking lot and create a multi-use industrial district is money well spent to preserve the rural characteristics of this shoreland residential area. Taxpayers want our elected officials to enforce Raymond's zoning ordinances, and when necessary, provide a vigorous legal defense of the Planning Board and Zoning Board of Appeals decisions. To summarize, I strongly urge this town meeting to amend this article, to allocate a portion of these surplus funds, to pay the town attorney, to be more aggressive and vigorously defend the planning board's, its decisions, and the attack on one of its members. Taking this action will show others that Raymond's zoning ordinances are enforced. Planning board decisions cannot be easily revisited or overturned with threats of court appeals and outspending. I didn't think that planning board decisions were for sale or could be overturned with money. I would hope that our elected officials would take action to defend the planning board, its decisions, and the attacks on individual members.
Article seventeen, to see if the town will authorize a selectman for the fiscal year two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen, to transfer funds between appropriation accounts as long as the grand total of all appropriations is not exceeded. Any such transfers to be approved only at a properly called public meeting of the selectman. The selectmen recommend Article sixteen, the Budget Finance Committee recommends Article seventeen.
Make a motion to accept Article seventeen.
Second.
Article seventeen's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? And those opposed? Thank you. Article sixteen passes. Article seventeen, to see if the town will authorize a selectman for the fiscal year two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen, to transfer funds between appropriation accounts as long as the grand total of all appropriations is not exceeded. Any such transfers to be approved only at a properly called public meeting of the selectman. The selectmen recommend Article sixteen, the Budget Finance Committee recommends Article seventeen.
Make a motion to accept Article seventeen.
Second.
Article seventeen's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of Article fifteen? And opposed? Article fifteen passes. Thank you. Article sixteen, to see if the town will vote to authorize a selectman to borrow from or appropriate from the undesigned fund balance surplus as they deemed advisable to meet the unanticipated needs of the community that occur during the fiscal year. The selectmen recommend amount-
Undesignated.
Undesignated fund balance.
Motion to accept Article sixteen.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on Article sixteen? All those in favor of Article nineteen? And those opposed? Thank you. Article sixteen passes. Article twenty, to see if the town will authorize a selectman for the fiscal year two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen, to transfer funds between appropriation accounts as long as the grand total of all appropriations is not exceeded. Any such transfers to be approved only at a properly called public meeting of the selectman. The selectmen recommend Article sixteen, the Budget Finance Committee recommends Article seventeen.
Make a motion to accept Article seventeen.
Second.
Article seventeen's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of Article seventeen? And those opposed? Thank you. Article nineteen passes. Article twenty, to see if the town will vote to authorize a tax collector or treasurer to accept prepayments of taxes not yet committed pursuant to Title thirty-six, main revised statutes annotated section five oh six. The selectmen recommend Article twenty, the Budget Finance Committee recommends Article twenty.
Make a motion to accept Article twenty.
Second.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Accept or demand?
Accept.
So if somebody wants a prepayment, they're not going to demand?
If you could, just step up to the microphone. Might have been a rhetorical question. Please, please just step right up if you have comments.
Uh, Bruce Sanford, Mountain Road Raymond. I'm just curious if the town is going to pay seven percent interest on, uh, property taxes paid in advance. Is that a possibility?
No, that's not a possibility at all.
We thought of it.
Bruce, did you get an answer to that question? Is there any other discussion on Article twenty? All those in favor of Article twenty? And those opposed? Article twenty passes. Thank you. Article twenty-one, to see if the town will vote to appropriate two hundred and thirty-three thousand, two hundred and forty-six dollars from tax increment of the pipeline Route three oh two tax increment financing district for FY two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen, projects proposed in the tax increment financing district development program. There are, I'm gonna read the note because there are numbers that go along with it. Raymond Casco Historical Society, eighteen hundred dollars, infrastructure for hydrants, fifty-six hundred and fifty dollars, waterline extension bond payment, sixty-four thousand and sixty-four dollars, Route three oh two bond payment, forty-three thousand, eight hundred and forty-five dollars, street flag maintenance, one thousand dollars, Route three oh two corridor mowing, sidewalks, etc., thirty thousand, nine hundred and fifty-one dollars, GOP cog, four thousand, four hundred and thirty-six dollars, economic development, seven thousand dollars, GIS services, twenty-five thousand dollars, Raymond Waterways Protective Association, seventeen thousand, five hundred dollars, and Main Street sidewalk project match, thirty-two thousand dollars. The selectmen recommend Article twenty-one, the Budget Finance Committee recommends Article twenty-one.
Make a motion to accept Article twenty-one.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. There is discussion?
Charles Levitt, still from East Raymond. Uh, in the coming months and going into the next fiscal year, we're gonna be hearing, uh, the flag being waved about economic development. Uh, we've spent, uh, a lot of municipal time, uh, going over, uh, issues about economic development, uh, what we should and shouldn't do and where should Raymond be headed, as if Raymond's in a bad place, uh, where should we be? I just wanna bring to everyone's attention that Article twenty-one is a TIF, and under that tax increment finance district, which we voted on, which are funds that we receive from the gas line project, are all economic development funds. So when this body looks at that number of two hundred and thirty-three thousand, two hundred and forty-six dollars, and generally for the past seven or eight or nine or ten years, it's been close to that number, and actually that TIF was originally designed for two point five million and will probably be approximately four million dollars, that's economic development, folks. So don't let this gimmick that's being pushed on us, using our reserves, our undesignated fund balance, going out for bonds and saying, "We need all of this because we need economic development." The citizens of the town of Raymond have bellied up to the bar more than once with hundreds of thousands, almost millions of dollars for economic development. Now, it hasn't been used properly, that's an issue to be looked at as far as administration in our form of government, but it's not the fault of the people of the town of Raymond. We have funded economic development, look at the list, and that's what we do. Thank you.
Is there any other discussion on Article twenty-one? All those in favor of Article twenty-one? And those opposed? Article twenty-one passes. Article twenty-two, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate five hundred and twenty-one thousand, four hundred and sixty-seven dollars for the administration account. The selectmen recommend Article twenty-two, and the Budget Finance Committee recommends Article twenty-two.
Move Article twenty-two.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there a discussion on Article twenty-two?
Steve Laney, sixty-six Mustang Road. I just have a question. I noticed in a number of places in the, in the budget, it appears like salaries are going up again pretty significantly, that's a significant increase. Um, what percent raise are we looking at? Number one, are we still using the Boston Consumer Price Index for this purpose? And are we still paying one hundred percent of medical insurance for employees and families? Three questions.
Mr. Moderator, the overall, uh, pay raises this year, one point four percent. No, we're not using the Boston Metro CPI anymore. Um, what was the other question?
Uh, medical.
Uh, employees have been paying into their medical for quite a few years now.
Uh, last year, I believe it was, uh, full medical was paid, including covering all deductibles. That's what the budget, I was on Budget and Finance last year, that's what it was.
That's not true, Steve.
No, it's just not.
We, we, we set aside money for a reimbursement account, a health reimbursement account for the employees if they meet the deductible, um, so-
Setting aside money in a health savings account is the same as paying deductible.
Health reimbursement account, which is different than a health savings account. So we help them meet their deductible.
We pay the deductible.
We help them meet their deductible. Once they hit their deductible, then it becomes a share.
Okay.
Are there any other questions regarding Article twenty-two or comments? Excuse me. I saw another hand go up, I wasn't sure if, that's not, all right. All those in favor of Article twenty-two? And those opposed? Article twenty-two passes. Thank you. Article twenty-three, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate fifty-one thousand, nine hundred and ninety-eight dollars for the assessing account. The selectmen recommend Article twenty-three, the Budget Finance Committee recommends Article twenty-three.
Make a motion to accept Article twenty-three.
Second.
Article twenty-three's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of Article twenty-three? And opposed? Article twenty-three passes. Thank you. Article twenty-four, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate twenty thousand, two hundred and fifty-six dollars for the town hall account. The selectmen recommend Article twenty-four, the Budget Finance Committee recommends Article twenty-four.
Make a motion to accept Article twenty-four.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on Article twenty-four? All those in favor of Article twenty-four? And those opposed? Article twenty-four passes. Article twenty-five, to see if the town will vote, vote to raise and appropriate four hundred and seventy-two thousand, four hundred and ninety-seven dollars for the insurance account. The selectmen recommend Article twenty-five, the Budget Finance Committee recommends Article twenty-five.
Move Article twenty-five.
Second.
Article twenty-five's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of Article twenty-five? And opposed? Article twenty-five passes. Thank you. Articles twenty-six, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate six thousand dollars for the general assistance account. Selectmen recommend Article twenty-six, the Budget Finance Committee recommends Article twenty-six.
Make a motion to accept Article twenty-six.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of Article twenty-six? And those opposed? Article twenty-six passes. Article twenty-seven, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate one hundred and eighty thousand, three hundred and sixty-five dollars for the technology department account. The selectmen recommend Article twenty-seven, the Budget Finance Committee recommends Article twenty-seven.
Motion to accept Article twenty-seven.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on Article twenty-seven? All those in favor of Article twenty-seven? And those opposed? Article twenty-seven passes. Article twenty-eight, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate ninety-two thousand, five hundred and eleven dollars for the community development account. The selectmen recommend Article twenty-eight, and the Budget Finance Committee recommends Article twenty-eight.
Make a motion to accept Article twenty-eight.
Second.
Article twenty-eight's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of Article twenty-eight? And those opposed? Article twenty-eight passes. Article twenty-nine, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate six hundred and forty-nine thousand, four hundred and fifty-six dollars for the fire rescue department account. The selectmen recommend Article twenty-nine, the Budget Finance Committee recommends Article twenty-nine.
Make a motion to accept Article twenty-nine.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on Article twenty-nine? All those in favor of Article twenty-nine? And opposed? Article twenty-nine passes. Article thirty, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate fifteen thousand, eight hundred and seventy dollars for the animal control account. The selectmen recommend Article thirty, the Budget Finance Committee recommends Article thirty.
Make a motion to accept Article thirty.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on Article thirty? All those in favor? And those opposed? Article thirty passes. Thank you. Article thirty-one, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate twenty-one thousand dollars for the infrastructure account. The selectmen recommend Article thirty, the Budget Finance Committee recommends Article thirty-one. Excuse me.
Motion to approve Article thirty-one.
Second.
Article thirty-one's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of Article thirty-one? Those opposed? Article thirty-one passes. Thank you. Article thirty-two, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate six hundred and seventy-three thousand, two hundred and ninety-four dollars for the public works account. The selectmen recommend Article thirty-two, the Budget Finance Committee recommends Article thirty-two.
Make a motion to accept Article thirty-two.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on Article thirty-two? All those in favor of Article thirty-two? And those opposed? Article thirty-two passes. Article thirty-three, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate four hundred and twenty-nine thousand, one hundred and seventy-seven dollars for the solid waste account. The selectmen recommend Article thirty-three, the Budget Finance Committee recommends Article thirty-three.
Motion to approve Article thirty-three.
Second.
Article thirty-three's been moved and seconded. Is there discussion? All those in favor? And opposed? Article thirty-three passes. Article thirty-four, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate nineteen thousand, two hundred and sixty dollars for the cemeteries account. The selectmen recommend Article thirty-four, the Budget Finance Committee recommends Article thirty-four.
Motion to approve Article thirty-four.
Second.
Article thirty-four's been moved and seconded. Is there discussion?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'm Karen Sanford of Mountain Road Raymond. On the cemeteries account, what exactly does that cover? Because my understanding is public works is now attending to the cemeteries. So what does the separate account cover?
It's mostly mowing, upkeep, even though public works does some of the work, there's still mowing that gets done by outside contractors.
Thank you.
Is there any other discussion on Article thirty-four? All those in favor of Article thirty-four? And those opposed? Article thirty-four passes. Article thirty-five, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate thirteen thousand, nine hundred and ninety-eight dollars for the parks and recreation account. Included are materials, maintenance equipment, twenty-five hundred dollars, contract services, sixty-eight hundred and ninety-eight dollars. Raymond Rattler snowmobile, sixteen hundred dollars. Raymond baseball and softball, one thousand dollars. Agua mowing and soccer, two thousand dollars. The selectmen recommend Article thirty-five. The Budget Finance Committee recommends thirteen thousand, one hundred and ninety-eight dollars for Article thirty-five, reducing Raymond Rattlers to eight hundred.
Motion to approve Article thirty-five.
Second.
The selectmen's recommendation?
Yes, the selectmen's recommendation.
Thank you. Article thirty-five, as recommended by the selectmen, is been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Just wanting to, uh, explain the change, uh, as proposed by the Budget Finance Committee. Um, we heard, we asked each of these groups to come back and tell us how they spent their money, the money that's provided. Um, the Raymond Rattlers didn't respond after two requests, and, uh, so it was a recommendation of the Budget Finance Committee to reduce the amount given to them from sixteen hundred to eight hundred, um, which, um, was a, was a previous amount given to them. The reason for the sixteen hundred was it's, it's kind of traditionally the money that's, that's accrued by the town for revenue from, uh, snowmobile registrations. And, uh, the argument that I gave, which, uh, I was one of those who recommended this, was we don't do that with, with registrations for cars, for example, so why should it be that we would do this for, for snowmobiles? They do great work, but I was, I was personally, I felt that they, that I as a representative of you, the taxpayers, couldn't approve, uh, that amount without having some understanding of how they spent the money. So, Mr. Moderator, how do I go about? Do you wanna, I would like to make sure that, uh, folks have a chance to vote on the lesser amount. So I can either, uh, make another motion? Is that what I would do?
You would need to move to amend the, the selectmen's recommended article to the, the Budget Finance Committee recommended number.
So, Mr. Moderator, I would, I would move that we amend the motion to the Budget Finance Committee amount of thirteen thousand, one hundred and ninety-eight dollars.
I will second.
It's been moved and seconded.
Mr. Moderator, point of clarification, I think you need to vote on the article as it was voted on, and then if it fails, then you take a revote.
No, you can make an, you can, you can amend an article.
Right, right. You can, I will accept the, uh, the article as amended, a vote on the amended article.
You have to.
The motion and a second.
Right. It's been moved and seconded to amend Article thirty-five to the Budget Committee amount of thirteen thousand, one hundred and ninety-eight dollars. And just for clarity's sake, if, when we vote, if there's other discussion, um, if you wanna go back to the original number, then you would oppose this motion, and if you're in favor of the Budget Committee's recommendation, which reduces the Raymond Rattlers to eight hundred dollars, then you vote yes.
Mr. Moderator?
Mr. Moderator, which one are we talking about here?
No.
That we're voting on initially?
The amendment.
The thirteen ninety-eight. The selectmen's?
No, it's been, it's been amended. The motion has now been amended to the Budget Finance Committee recommendation.
Yeah, Mr. Moderator, um-
No, you had a motion in a second on the other one.
Well, they can amend it.
Is, just for clarity, to accept the amendment? Yes.
Mr. Moderator?
No.
Just, Joe Bruno, Christina Court, Raymond. I've been coming to town meeting for 35 years. The Raymond Rattlers have always gotten the snowmobile registration fees as part of their maintenance for all the snowmobile trails in Raymond. There's a cost to doing that, and gas, time, labor. If you own a snowmobile and you use the trails, whether for cross-country skiing or snowmobiling, you really may want to consider what you do with this money. This has been a longtime tradition of the town of Raymond to support the snowmobile club. So I ask that you vote down the amendment and vote for the original article.
This is also a commonly, I guess, a common way for this to be done in other towns. It's not exclusive to Raymond. You know, I do understand the point that we don't allocate things like car excise tax and so forth, but when it comes to snowmobile clubs and snowmobile trail maintenance, this is the standard for Maine.
Marlee Turner, 31 Big Pine Road. Having been on a Budget Committee for eight years in another town, we did not think it was hard for them to answer the question, "How did you spend the money?" We asked the same question, and we made the same kind of answers. I agree with what the Budget Committee did.
Hi, Katrina Logan Sangster, 33 Wamnuck Road. I just, you made some comment about this is tradition, blah de blah de blah. I didn't mean that, sorry, I didn't mean that. But last year, the budget was $800. So this would be maintaining the same as level as...
Last year, the budget was $2,400.
No, well, not, that's according to your budget book here. It says for Raymond Rattler snowmobile, $800 for final budget 1314. So I'm also in favor of maintaining that level. Thank you.
They were overpaid, Mr. Moderator. The Raymond Rattlers got more money last year than they put in in snowmobile registration fees. That's why there was adjustment. But they normally have gotten $1,600.
With due respect, Mr. Bruno, I don't know how you know that. I don't, as a Budget Finance Committee member, know that. So that's great that you know that, we don't.
Well, all I do is ask questions. Blah, blah, blah.
That piece of information actually came from our finance office.
If we could direct our comments and questions to the chair, it would be really appreciated. Yes. Through the moderator. The peanut gallery continues to advise me. So we have a motion on the floor to accept the amended Article 35 with the Budget Committee's recommendation of $13,198. All those in favor? And those opposed? The amended Article 35 passes. And now we have to vote the article, absolutely. So the article's been amended at $13,198. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor of Article 35 as amended? And opposed? Thank you. Article 35 as amended passes. Excuse me. To see if the town will vote, Article 36, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate $40,500 for the Raymond Village Library, the selectmen recommend Article 36. The Budget Finance Committee recommends Article 36.
Make a motion to accept Article 36.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on Article 36?
Christine France, 16 Ledge Hill Road. I just want to thank the community for their support of the library. There's a lot of people, many volunteers, our staff. We appreciate the support of the town officials. We're working very hard, very, very hard. I don't know if all of you here are library goers. If you haven't been to the library in a while, please, please, visit us. We're doing our darndest. We're trying to make it a wonderful place and a wonderful community resource. So please support us, and thank you very much.
Paula Jandro, 24 Lookout Lane. I moved to Raymond about a year and a half ago, and I had never been to Maine or a small town. And the first place I thought to go was the library. And I went there, and it became a base. And I want everybody to understand that a library is a base for most communities. And without community's support, we will not have a library. Right now, I was, I was on the committee, or as a trustee, if I had to give it up. If you guys ever sat with the board and watched Marie crunch numbers, you would have no clue that that place even ran. I mean, I don't know how she does it, but it runs. And it's, just in the past year, has become... So many great things have happened. The numbers are up. We have new technology. And the children's literature is amazing, and programs are amazing. The only problem is we don't have space for it, or the funding. And slowly but surely, we will get there with everyone's support. Thank you.
Whitney Lucas, 3 AI Road. I'm friends with Paula, and I just joined the board recently of the library. And like Paula, I moved from out of state about seven years ago, have a young family. And I too, the library was the first spot I went to. Recently, I've, I'm actually, I work from home, so, but I've been able to be just, to attend the library a lot with my kids. And I just think the library as a focal point of just a town. I've heard a lot of stuff about, you know, Raymond, let's grow our town. I just want to, I mean, there's some things to bring to light. I mean, I read this thing about the cemetery fund getting almost $20,000. And yet the library, the amount that it currently gets, even with this raise, not even half that can even cover the library's basic costs of having one director and a couple employees. I mean, I'm at these meetings for, just the past couple of meetings, and we're talking about, oh, are, you know, are we going to have enough money for our phone lines? And I just think that's ridiculous for a town. Whether you go to the library often or not, right now, the idea of the library is just for it to survive. I mean, I don't know. To me, that's pathetic. I think a library should be maybe thriving. And maybe there could be a whole nother way of having a library where it's a focal point of the town for all different age groups and different events to go on. And I'm, I really hope people can look at this and not just say, yeah, let's approve it. And to, you know, for more people to understand that there's much more going on here than, yeah, let's approve it to have a few more thousand dollars for the library. But to really help fight, I joined the board to say, to, you know, to really help to see if there's something that can be done beyond, you know, paying half its operations costs. So that's, thank you.
Benjamin Crowder, 63 Sloans Cove Road. Unlike the previous two speakers, I did not move here from away. I've grown up in Raymond. I've lived in Raymond almost my entire life, having moved here at the age of four. And I practically grew up in the Raymond Village Library. I was there every summer. I was there in the school year. I loved to read. It was one of my favorite things growing up. And it kind of served me well, following through, throughout school, throughout college, and into a professional career. I now have two young sons who are three years old, and I hope to be able to share the library with them and my own love of reading. It's a valuable community resource. It does a lot for the town of Raymond. And the idea with the library is not so much that it should survive, but that it should be able to thrive. And funds are important for that, not just a maintenance level of funds, but perhaps an expanded level of funds. So I certainly would recommend approval.
Good evening. Alex Jacobino on, I live on Castleton Road. Is an amendment in order here? Can I amend this?
You can't go up.
Why not? We just amended the last...
You can go down. You can't go up.
Can you show me where that occurs? Do you have, do you have a law?
It's in state statute, yes.
Can I see it?
I don't have the statutes with me.
Well, then I challenge the chair. Okay, I want to amend this, I want to amend this motion.
I'm the moderator.
I'd like to amend this. Okay? I would like to double this. Okay, instead of the, what is it, $40,000? I'd like to see it $90,000. Okay, no, I'm making a motion.
It's out of order.
Oh, you can't, you're out of order.
It is out of order.
You can't prove that.
Okay.
Don't laugh. It's not funny. You can't prove it. Show me. Show me the statute.
I don't need to.
You don't?
The ruling of the chair, the ruling of the moderator is that is out of order.
The motion is out of order?
Yes.
The amendment? Okay. I challenge the chair.
Fair enough.
You have to call a vote?
You have to be seconded.
Have a second on that challenge? I got it.
Louise?
The principle of not raising the value at a town meeting is because it has not been announced. The people that are out there, that are not here tonight, would not know about it. Therefore, they had planned on what we are presenting tonight, because they've hopefully read the warrant. And by raising it tonight, it would be unfair to them, because they wouldn't be here to vote for what you've done. What I would suggest doing is leaving the price where it is now, and either helping the library raise funds, or come back next year and talk to the selectmen and see if you could raise it for next year.
Fine, thank you. That's how it should be explained.
Thank you, Louise. Are you withdrawing your challenge? All those in favor of challenging the chair? Opposed? I know. Just a little levity. So the motion on the floor is to accept Article 36. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor of Article 36? And those opposed? Thank you. Article 37, to see whether the town will vote to carry forward any existing fund balance in the capital improvement program, CIP, account. The selectmen recommend Article 37. The Budget Finance Committee recommends Article 37.
Move to recommend, or move to pass Article 37.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on Article 37? All those in favor? And those opposed? Article 37 passes. Article 38, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate $1,169,658 for the capital improvement account. Included are public works equipment reserve, $35,000. 2004 public works construction bond final payment, $96,731. 2013 public works road construction bond payment, $63,000. Public works paving road reserve, $275,000. Municipal facilities maintenance improvements, $25,000. 2002 PSB bond payment, $115,424. 2004 fire equipment bond final payment, $56,003. Fire department's equipment facilities, $75,000. Generator for off-site backup servers, $25,000. Fire pond rehabilitation project, $15,000. District One site distance project, $15,000. Plains Road, Paul, excuse me, Paul Barn, $80,000. Valley Road Communications Tower, $118,000. And a down payment for engine two replacement, $175,000. The selectmen recommend Article 38. The Budget Finance Committee recommends Article 38.
Make a motion to accept Article 38.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Discussion?
We have a down payment on a fire engine. What happens to the rest of the fire engine? How does that fit in with this year's budget or future budgets?
Mr. Moderator?
If you look at Article 44, the rest of the money is bonded to $250,000 for the rest of the fire engine replacement.
I'm not up on my visits to the fire station now that my son has grown and out of the house. How desperate are we in need of a new fire engine that we need to bond out? The purchase of a new fire engine as opposed to saving for another few years to get a fire engine without putting ourselves in debt?
You can answer that first, but I'd be happy, I'd be happy to speak on that. But you can answer the question.
I will adjust the microphone, sorry. Bruce Tupper, Fire Chief, Rescue Chief, and a resident of 118 Valley Road, town of Raymond. The truck that we're replacing is a 25-year-old vehicle. It has been refurbished completely once in its life already. These vehicles carry all the weight that they are designed to carry 100% of the time, because that's what we use them for. However, the chassis is designed to carry the weight for 80% of the time. It is a commercial chassis. I think the burning question to directly answer your question is that last year, we got prices of $400,000 to replace the apparatus. And in the one-year timeframe, it's gone to $425. Two years before that, it was down in the 300s. How long do we want to keep deferring the inevitable? It is a truck that does need to be replaced. Technology has changed in 25 years. We now use an item called compressed air foam, which is vitally important with our lowered manpower. It decreases the amount of people we need to handle a hose line. It increases our impact on a fire and its knock-down power on a fire. I guess it's really the question of how long do we want to defer the purchase of it? And the inevitable is that the price of it is going to continue to rise.
Shannon Nassau, 137 Valley Road. As a member of the fire station, I'm actually an EMT, and I don't know a whole lot about fire trucks, except watching my husband for the past 20 years, who's been a member. But when I had to sit at a truck check the other day, maybe two weeks ago, and we thought it'd be a nice go over the trucks, basic, you know, make sure we know where all our apparatus is so that we're properly prepared. And we came across a couple of issues that then took an hour and a half to two hours to fix on a Wednesday night after we had already done everything else. It means that our apparatus, just like our regular vehicles, need constant maintenance. A 25-year-old vehicle is going to need even more. I just would hope that you would consider that.
Charles Levitt, East Raymond. This is where the rubber hits the road. Article 38, Article 40, Article 43, and Article 44. It's where the fix is in. And this is more for the benefit of the 3,800 voters who aren't here tonight. And for that, we all should feel pretty poorly. And for the fact that none of those voters will get a chance to vote on these particular four articles one week from today at the polls. The fix in being this. With these combined articles coming forward, but this one included, because they're all tied together, so there's my relevance. These two boards in front of you in the administration, despite their political leanings, have come to this community and said, one, we're going to raise taxes. Two, we're going to spend down the savings account, which is the undesignated fund balance to the tune of close to using these floating figures, 1.9, it's 1.6. It's probably about a half a million dollars, so we're spending down our savings account. We're increasing debt. So as you go in, look at these bonds and start looking at the interest rates we're paying and what we could have capital improved before... So as you go in, look at these bonds and start looking at the interest rates we're paying and what we could have capital improved before, we're now bonding out and paying for the debt. And we're expanding the size of government. So taken as a whole, for those thirty-eight-hundred other people who can vote in this town, I think this is a lesson in democracy. I won't stand here like others have in the past and say, "This is the most undemocratic process I've ever been in." It isn't. This is democracy as it was intended. The intended consequences are all those. Your taxes are going to go up despite the efforts of some people saying that they think they're going to be able to control it. When you go a half a million dollars over LD-one, with a half a million dollars over, and that's an increase and not an expanding, it's an increase, so therefore it will be built into the budget, you're not going to control it. Our taxes are going to go through the roof. I'm willing to accept it. I just wonder how many others are. Thank you.
Peter Levitt, two Levitt Road. Just to echo that a little bit, and I'm sure it's not lost on any of the individuals up here tonight. You know, sometimes what happens is individuals that have maybe the minority opinion are branded as negative, and then everybody else that goes along with the herd is positive. I don't particularly subscribe to that. But I'm sure it hasn't escaped the Budget Finance Committee that the revised GDP for the first quarter of this year went from a zero point one plus to a minus one percent. So we are, in effect, one quarter away from technically a recession. And I know this austere body is aware of that. So at this point in time, I'm not being negative. I'm just not being overly optimistic. And so in the face of increasing debt, taking land off of the tax rolls, investing, as it was, once was explained to me in household finances as, "I'm spending money to save money." That only works if you need to buy what you're buying. So the mad rush to the IRT, because the soldiers are going to come in and do all the labor for us. If we don't need a pole barn, that's not a savings. That's an expense. And as I look at the figures here, as far as where the projected mill rate is going, it certainly isn't declining. So I guess I just make a plea that everyone that maybe has a little bit of a divergent opinion is not necessarily negative. They just may not be as optimistic. Thank you.
Bruce Sanford, Mountain Road, Raymond. The question I have is what is the projected mill rate for two thousand and fourteen, fifteen, assuming this all passes as presented? If that number's been given, I don't have it, I'm curious.
It's hard to predict, Bruce. One of the things is the school budget, which is a three and a half percent increase in the school budget. So if you look at your projected mill rate sheet that we handed out, that's the mill rate for the last nine years. The school budget's projected to go up three and a half percent. And what portion of Raymond, you know, around forty-five percent of that? That has probably the biggest effect on the mill rate than what this municipal budget does. If you look at the percentage in the municipal budget compared to the overall budget. The municipal budget increase, when you do all the math on it, is probably about a two point two percent increase on the municipal side, not the overall mill rate. Hope that answers your question. You can't set the mill rate until you know what all the numbers are. We don't know what all the numbers are yet. Yeah, you know, if everything passes the way it is, it might be a little bit more than that. Because of the school, not because of the municipal budget.
Peter Levitt, two Levitt Road. And it just occurs to me that the young lady that spoke earlier on, it struck a note with me. I moved to Raymond not because I knew there was going to be a seven-eleven within five minutes of my place. I didn't, quite honestly, even move to Raymond because I had researched thoroughly how, what the quality of the public schools are. I moved to Raymond because I could afford it. And so I understand what she's saying. It is expensive to live in paradise. I want my kids to be able to live in paradise, too. And the way things are going, I'm not optimistic that that can happen either. So there is a cost that goes with living in paradise. I just don't know when that cost gets so high that you no longer have that opportunity. Thanks.
Mr. Moderator? If I may respond to that. Just so you know, Raymond, I believe, has the lowest tax rate in Cumberland County, as far as its mill rate, so. It's not like we're not watching our pennies.
Mr. Moderator? Paula Giandro, twenty-four Lookout Lane. On that last comment, I did research. I researched it because I have two young children that were going to come to this town and grow up in this town. And it is paradise. I look out my window every day thankful that I chose this town. And I chose this town because look at everyone around you. Look at the people that are laughing at a board, making jokes. That doesn't happen in a city, or even a bigger town. This is a family. If you want it to stay that way, then you have to spend money. It's two thousand and fourteen. Not only that, but I want that fire truck to make it to my house that is not five minutes from a seven-eleven.
Don Willard, Town Manager. I hope everybody did pick up the mill rate history. I want people to take a look at that. I mean, nothing stays level, nothing stays flat forever. We do our best every day to try to live within our means. I say live below our means in some ways, to provide exemplary services with sometimes, you know, limited funds. We try to be creative. We try to stretch resources. We have a great group of individuals that work for the town. Both, you know, elected officials, appointed officials, people working, volunteers in the interest of the town. And so I want people to know that. And, you know, we do have among the lowest mill rates in the developed world. And there's always going to be, there's always going to be, when I say developed world, I mean the greater Portland area. And so, you know, you can probably find a lower rate in range six, township eleven. But if you want to live in a town, you know, proximal to greater Portland, you're not going to find a lower mill rate.
Yes, Charles Levitt, East Raymond. Just to historically let a few folks in the room who don't know, this one page used to be five pages of a budget analysis that the people in the Town of Raymond used to receive. If you recall our old town reports, there would be an extensive history and analysis, both of the school budget and the town budget. When we hear the word "flat," the word "flat" is since two thousand and seven, the Town of Raymond has increased the net municipal budget by twenty-three percent. That ain't flat in my book. I want to ask anybody in the private sector who's been working in the last six or seven years that they've received four hundred and eight thousand dollar increase in six or seven years, a twenty-three percent increase, and still call it flat. Another gimmick that we're seeing, and it's included in this, is we're being told last year, despite the fact that administration said, "We shouldn't sell the Crown Castle a piece of land. It was a half an acre of land for nine hundred thousand. We had to fight tooth and nail to convince them it was a good idea." Then when we took seven hundred and five thousand dollars and gave it to the fire department, and gave it to the Public Works Department, this year they come back and say, "Well, now we have a revenue shortfall." See the gimmick? Okay? Do I have to explain it anymore? I'm not explaining it to this crowd anymore, I'm explaining it to the other thirty-eight-hundred people out there. We gave them seven hundred and five thousand dollars. We kept in reserve two hundred thousand dollars to pay down a bond on the roads, two million dollars, that we're going to pay a quarter, we're going to pay a quarter of a million dollars in interest on, and we never made the principal payment this year. We deferred it. When we go to the LD-one override of a half a million dollars, that half a million dollars will be built into the municipal budget forever. So when this all passes and everyone leaves here, all happy tonight, thinking, "Boy, didn't we really do a good job? And we beat those negative people with all our positive smiles." We're going to go back, and in five years, and you can talk all you want about, "Oh, the mill rate is the lowest of the lowest." Just give it a minute. Maybe like five years. Because it's built in, it's like a balloon mortgage. And the same people who are trying to sell this to you were the same ones trying to sell credit swap defaults probably about seven or five or six years ago. So thank you.
Mr. Moderator? If I can correct some of what was just said? I'm going to try and explain this. We're taking some money from the undesignated fund balance, making capital improvements. As you can see, under Article thirty-eight, there's about four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in cash were taken out to make investments that get a return. That's what this is about. We are not permanently raising the budget. That is, that is not true.
That's not a gimmick.
Dennis Morris Anderson, Rose. I'd like to thank all you elected officials for doing all the homework and working with the department heads. I've had many people come to the microphone and speak twice. I call for the vote.
We have been asked to vote on the article. There's no debate. All those in favor of Article thirty-eight? And those opposed? Article thirty-eight passes. Thank you. And just from a procedural standpoint, just to address the moment of silence, I generally like to let, as a moderator, let everyone address an issue. And so, on occasion, if it was early in the debate, I might have ruled that out of order. But given that it seemed like the discussion was done, that's why I paused for a moment, just to respect the motion. So moving on. Also from a procedural standpoint, normally I don't take time to justify my rulings. There is a legal document as far as, so there was a question on an earlier vote about raising a capped or a limited appropriation. There is legal grounds and justification in main state law through the court system that caps appropriations. So normally I don't, I ruled you out of order, but just for clarity's sakes, there is, it is in, it has been stated by the court that appropriations are capped, and Louise very articulately explained it. Normally, as moderator, I don't feel the need to have to justify or try to explain things, but I appreciate Louise coming up to the microphone and explaining that. And if you'd like to see the legal document, I'm happy to provide it. It's in the main moderator, the main moderator rules. Moving on to Article thirty-nine. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate six hundred and seventeen thousand, five hundred and three dollars for the county tax account, the selectmen recommend Article thirty-nine. The Budget Finance Committee recommends Article thirty-nine.
Move Article thirty-nine.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of Article thirty-nine? And opposed? Thank you. Article thirty-nine passes. Article forty, to see if the town will vote to appropriate the total sum of one million, nine hundred and seventeen thousand, four hundred and seventy dollars from estimated non-property tax revenues to reduce the property tax commitment, together with all categories of funds, which may be available from the federal government and any other sources, including thirty-two thousand dollars from the TIF reserve. The selectmen recommend Article forty. The Budget Finance Committee recommends Article forty.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Charles Levitt, East Raymond. So am I correct that this is where the revenue that we're talking about to appropriate from the estimated non-property tax revenue is the four hundred and twenty-five somewhere thousand from the undesignated fund balance?
Yes, that's correct.
Very good.
It's being used.
That's, that's all I need.
Well, I wanted to expand slightly. Thank you.
Don finishes comments.
So it's very, very usual and typical to use undesignated fund balance for major non-recurring capital improvements, which is being proposed. That's what we're doing. And so the alternative, of course, would be to build the surplus to the stratosphere, which would be extremely unwise, extremely unfair, and financially not prudent. And so this is a common way to realize your capital objectives, and to also manage your accounts, if you will, to manage your undesignated fund balance. And I think it's been pretty well publicized that I believe there are only two towns in Maine, Thelmath and Raymond, AAA towns, standard and pause. So I think that speaks to the management of the town, the selectmen's management of the town, the Budget Finance Committee management of the town, administration's management of the town, an accepted policy, an accepted way to manage your undesignated fund balance. We're well above the selectmen's undesignated fund balance threshold, as well as that recommended by the auditor.
So what is the undesignated fund balance? It seems to be a moving target. Is it two point one, two point two?
It's closer, two point three five.
Two point three five?
At the moment.
So what is the auditor's recommendation?
Two million.
Two million. So we're, we're going beyond the auditor's recommendation. And nowhere in any of this financial management reports, as a matter of fact, I was, I recall asking this question at a Budget Finance Committee, and I was told by the Chair that, "Well, go look it up yourself." So the reason why I'm asking these questions tonight is because I don't think we can have any diversionary tactics. This is what the folks in the Town of Raymond need to know. What is the undesignated fund balance? Last year it was a little over two point one. So now it appears as though it's at two point three. And that by spending four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars out of it, we'll be at one point nine, which will still be under the auditor's recommendation.
Mr. Moderator, if I may?
My, my point being this. Even though it falls in the category of non-property tax revenue, the reality is, the undesignated fund balance is your property tax revenue from years past. So what we're doing is we're transferring money that is basically our savings account. It's our rainy day fund. It's for the event that we go into a double-dip recession. It's the reason why, probably more than any other reason, and the fact that we kept a stable tax mill rate from the municipal side for the past seven or eight years and complied with LD-one, why we got that standard and pause rating. So I just want to make those facts clear. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Couple of points. It's not only property taxes that go into the undesignated fund balance. Your car excise taxes, there's all kinds, tree growth, there's all kinds of other money that goes into the undesignated fund balance. And if you look at the excise tax revenue from car purchases and people paying excise taxes, we are way over budget, which kind of contradicts some of that economic depression some people are thinking we're going into. Cars are being bought left and right, and excise taxes are being paid. So I mean, there's a mixture that goes into the undesignated fund balance. The odd thing about this is that Mr. Levitt was part of the Select Board. When we voted on a selectman policy that says we won't go above fifteen percent as far as the undesignated fund balance, we wanted to use, make it a prudent level to fund what we needed to fund. So, and we, and at one point nine million, we're well above that level.
And if I may, since Mr. Bruno brought up my voting record, once I became more aware of what an auditor's recommendation was, true professionals, not, no offense, gentlemen, but, and ladies, but a true professional accounting firm would state that is the appropriate fund level to keep in your savings or your reserve accounts, not what with all due respect, Mr. Bruno and his fifteen percent think of. So I was also the instigator, and with Mr. DeJardin, worked diligently to make sure that we reduced our dependence, and I believe it was called a gimmick, the dependence on the undesignated fund balance. That we worked diligently to get our usage down to zero, so that we weren't using it. We were appropriately funding what needed to be funded with tax money at the time. We weren't, when we had seventy thousand dollars in a reserve fund for revaluation, we turned that money back into the people of the Town of Raymond. That was seven cents on the mill rate, because we had no need to hold on to that money. We hold on to money- We hold on to money for a savings account. That's what prudent companies do. But it seems as though we've gone away from that. Thank you.
Peter Levitt, Two Levitt Road. I'm not trying to paint a gloom and doom on the economic future of this country. Basically, I'm pretty positive on it. A case in point, however, the only positive uptick that we've seen financially, the financial data, is that General Motors is doing better and Ford's doing better. The economic explanation for that is primarily that, at some point, cars with 190,000 miles on them simply won't start anymore, and we've reached that point, and that's one of the explanations, plus the fact that psychologically, Wall Street will say, "We just came out of a tough winter." So, everybody's kind of rewarding themselves a little bit. But to try and base a positive economic future based on the fact that, you know, Chevy is selling a few more cars, I think is a little thin. Thank you.
Mr. Moderator?
Mike Numbers?
Mike Reynolds, Kilt Drive. One of the other things we did for those folks who were here a year ago at this point, at last town meeting, we sold a piece of property, I shouldn't even say a piece of property, we sold an easement for about $900,000. Last year, we used a little over $700,000 of that $900,000 to do one-time capital improvements. If you also recall, last year at this point, state revenue sharing was a big question mark. They had lowered how much they were going to give to the town of Raymond, and we sat here last year, the number that was in our budget book was somewhere in the range of $20,000 or $25,000 less than what the state said they were going to give us. We chose to be optimistic. We thought that revenues would come in ahead. As Joe mentioned, especially the, the registration information has allowed us to have a projection now that we will balance last year's budget through additional revenues that were unanticipated. So, we had saved that approximate $200,000 from, that we did not spend from the sale of that property in anticipation, we might need it for something like, like the state shortfall. We found ourselves during this year's budget process in a position that we didn't need to use that $200,000. Okay? So, part of this 400-and-some-odd $25,000 is the leftover money from that sale that will once again be used for one-time capital improvements. And then, we are taking some money out of our savings account, but it is still approximately $200,000 above what the selectmen use as a policy, as a guidance for that savings account. So, I did want to take a moment to explain where some of the money came from, that $400,000. Thank you.
Bruce, did you?
Diane Shively, 70 Deep Cove Road. I guess I'm a little confused. These capital improvements, these one-time capital improvements, are these more important than a fire engine, that we need these capital improvements right away, that we need to bond out a fire engine? Isn't there some way we can reduce the amount of bonding that we're doing and, you know, use some of these funds so that we don't have to bond?
Mr. Moderator. In the original budget proposal that was brought to both of these boards, the bonded amount was projected to be much higher. Using this $400,000 was through the negotiation of this board and the Budget Committee. That's how we lowered the amount of the proposed bond that's before you this evening by, by using some of our savings, but not coming down to the level of our recommended, recommended amount, excuse me. So, we did do that in order to minimize the bond recommendation that we brought forth tonight.
What will be the interest rate on our bonds that we're going to be taking out this year?
Mr. Willard?
Well, we're hoping that they're going to be order of magnitude in the 2% range, We don't know that. That's conjecture at this point. Interestingly, though, Raymond is allowed, as any Maine community, the amount of debt that can be incurred by a municipality is limited by the state statute. The outstanding term obligations during a year can be no greater than 15% of the assessed taxable property at the beginning of the fiscal year. As of June 30th, 2013, the amount of outstanding term debt for the town of Raymond was 0.43%. 0.43%. So, Raymond is a very, very fiscally conservative town. You can debate the whole issue of the undesignated fund balance, auditor's recommendation, selectmen's recommendation, you can debate that all day long. The selectmen's policy has been vetted by the auditor, and it has been deemed to be fiscally prudent, fine. Once again, all the financials of the town have been vetted by the standard and pores. They set AAA rating for the town. So, the selectmen's policy is entirely appropriate, entirely consistent with other policies you see in other towns. Certainly, the auditor's policy is more conservative. The measure I use is, does the town have to borrow funds to operate the town? Many towns do. They're called, you know, tax, tax notes. And so, we don't have to do that. We have not done that in my time here, that I'm aware of. Yeah, we've never done that since I've been here, and I don't know before my time whether that was done. So, we're not borrowing funds to operate, tax anticipation notes to operate the town. We're fiscally very, very, very solid. We have a very low comparative mill rate. Our financials are strong.
Grace Levitt, Levitt Road. I hope we don't debate the use of the undesignated fund all night long. It's getting quite late, I'm sure. Others are feeling that way, too. And I hope you'll allow me a little, a little latitude here to speak at this point, even though it's not directly on this article, since many others have been speaking on things that are not quite directly on this article as well. And I just wanted, I wanted to get up before, but the question was moved, I would have made this point. A remark was made a few minutes ago, half an hour ago, about the school budget, and I would just hope that since we have spent a lot of money this evening looking out for the future of Raymond and the environment, and having a beautiful place for our children and our grandchildren, and I certainly support all of that, I would certainly hope that people do get out next week and support the school budget as well, because that's also the future of our children. Thank you for the latitude.
Bruce?
Bruce Sianthor, Mountain Road, Raymond. Just a brief comment. Don brought up the AAA rating of the town. I was going to mention that. I have read a report in the paper some, few months ago, that Raymond was handling its finances very well and was rather highly rated in comparison with other towns that surround us in the state. The unfortunate fact is that the average person is not going to have the time or the interest or all the facts to make the kinds of intricate decisions that all of the committees and the council and different people who volunteer around the town to conduct the town's business, or are paid to conduct the town's business. The average person isn't going to have the time or the interest to, to be able to delve into the intricacies of all of those things. That's why we have Finance Committee, that's why we have the selectmen's, why we have town managers, to do these things, to present to us, for us to vote on. It's not that we shouldn't ask questions and that we don't want to understand. I personally think that the town is well-handled and that the people who volunteer for the town in the many capacities are doing a good job. I'm a professional construction estimator. I work with architects across New England projecting construction costs. I can say that since 1960, construction costs have averaged 4% annual increase in the aggregate. Some, some years, it's more, some years, it's less, some years, it's flat. If you go back to the CPI, however, it's measured from 1900, inflation has averaged 3% to 3.5% a year in the aggregate. If you look at just the listing from 2005 up to current, over these eight or nine years, and apply a 3% or 3.5% CPI consumer price inflation increase, it really brings us to about where the mill rate is right now. I don't see that as a train wreck. It's not realistic to think that things are not going to increase in cost. We all see that, and I'm sure the Finance Committee and the Selectmen and everybody that volunteers on our behalf is doing their best, as, as can be done, to handle it. And I think that reasonable people can disagree reasonably on the issues without being personal. And I think that some of the personal comments that I've heard come through the microphone tonight are unfortunate, to put it, to put it candidly, and I would put it stronger than that, but I won't. Thank you.
Thank you, Bruce. Article 40 has been moved and seconded. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor of Article 40? And those opposed? Thank you. Article 40 passes. Article 41, to see if the town, the town will vote to authorize a selectman to accept or reject grants, donations, and/or gifts of money to the town of Raymond and to expend monies donated for specific purposes. The selectmen recommend Article 41, the Budget Finance Committee recommends Article 41.
Move Article 41.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on Article 41? All those in favor of Article 41? And opposed? It passes. Thank you. Article 42, to see if the town will vote to accept certain state funds as provided by the state, main state legislature during the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2014, and the other funds provided by any other entity, included but not limited to municipal revenue sharing, local road assistance, emergency management assistance, snowmobile registration money, tree growth reimbursement, general assistance reimbursement, veterans exemption reimbursement, and a state grant or other funds. The selectmen recommend Article 42, the Budget Finance Committee recommends Article 42.
Move Article 42.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on Article 42? All those in favor? Opposed? Article 42 passes. Louise informed me on Article 43, we will have a written, it's a secret ballot for LD1. So, she, the clerks will be passing out cards with a yes or no. She's asking that you circle your vote, and the clerks, how do you want to collect them?
Ballot box.
Okay. Yep. Drop them, bring them up from the box after you voted. Article 43, LD1, to see if the town will vote to increase the property tax levy limit of $2,221,87 established for the town of Raymond in state law by 200, by $500,000 for a total levy limit of $2,721,87. The selectmen recommend Article 43, the Budget Finance Committee recommends Article 43.
Move Article 43.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Of Article 43.
On Article 43, and this is going to be fun, so I'm going to ask the moderator to explain the difference between expending over LD1 and increasing over LD1, so that both the Budget Finance Committee will have the clear understanding and the Select Board what the word "increase" means to the ongoing budget in the town of Raymond.
You're asking me to explain the difference between expenditure and increase?
I think you might have voted for it, John.
I did vote for LD1. I was there.
So, maybe one of the august members, and I'm not being personal, of either committee can explain the difference between expend and increase a half a million dollars. That's $500,000 over LD1. This has been an LD1-compliant town. This was a town that actually voted for Tabor in its favor. So, will anyone please explain to the public the difference between the word "expend" and "increase"?
Increase increases the levy limit.
And?
On an ongoing basis.
On an ongoing basis. Thank you, Mr. Willard, for your honesty. So, when we hear that what we're doing tonight will have no impact on the future of what the town of Raymond does, and impact on your taxes, coming from such authority that it almost sounds true, it's not. A $500,000 override of LD1 called an increase for those who now are more educated, as myself, and I don't have a degree in finance, means that when we approve this, which it will be done, but for the 3,800 who aren't here tonight, remember this moment right now. This body here, these two boards, are now increasing your taxes by a half a million dollars, ongoing, forever. Thank you.
Kind of want to follow on to that, and having been on Budget and Finance, I've kind of questioned first for the Budget Finance Committee, then for Selectmen. Am I correct in that you do have that choice of increase or a one-time overrun expenditure? And if I'm, if that's correct, why did you choose the increase, which is ongoing forever, versus just this one time when we need the money, saying, "Okay, we can't make it, we need to go over this one year, and so, we go over this one year, and the next year, we'll, we'll look at it again," rather than building in that increase? I'd like to hear from both sides. Thanks.
Ralph?
Part of the reasoning is, if the bonding goes forward, the amount of the bonding would, needs to be accounted for in future years. So, by increasing, it allows you to take care of bond payments out in the future, as opposed to a one-year, getting, getting you through this year, but you're still going to, if you do the bonding, you're still going to have that commitment out in the future years.
Mr. Moderator?
I'll tell you how I'm looking at this. You have $425,000 in one-time capital projects, which is going to, is most of that $500,000. In the next three years, you're going to retire hundreds of thousands in bond payments. So, in my eyes, I don't, I see this as a one-time increase to do these capital projects. And, you know, I'll be working on the budget next year also, and I will make sure that we subtract out the one-time project costs and in future budgets.
I guess I'll ask you, Joe, and anybody else, why, if you're planning on it being a one-time, did you not choose language that would allow it to be a one-time, and we could vote on it another time if it ended up being a problem? And here, again, is the problem with bonding, is we're going to borrow money that we don't have, and then, we're going to be committed to bond payments long-term.
I mean, you know, if I can, Mr. Moderator, I, I think it's a matter of semantics, to be honest with you. I think it matters that who's, who's on the board. I mean, you have the Select Board, at least three members are going to continue to be on this, you know, and maybe even all five of us. I think we all have the same philosophy of this is one-time money, not ongoing. We're retiring more bond debt down the road, and I, I think from a fiscal standpoint, I don't see a huge impact on the mill rate.
My understanding of the definition of philosophy versus religion is religion asks you to believe without proof, philosophy demands that you always question.
With this override over LD1, this covers the combined school and municipal?
No.
Just the municipal?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Moderator? Is it, is it possible for us to amend this?
No.
Changing the language?
The language or the, or the?
Not the amounts, the language.
No. No, we can't go to expend.
Okay. I was, okay.
So, I'm a little confused. We get one definition is that the reason why we need a half a million dollars ongoing is to pay for the bonds, and then, I hear, which I know, because it'll be a $305,000 in a year that we'll be retiring bonds, that it's a one-time expenditure because we're going to have the money to pay for the ongoing new bonds. So, there's that doublespeak. There's that, what's happening to some very committed, and actually, maybe even some bright people on Budget Finance who are starting to get the picture a little bit. This is doublespeak. So, one side says it's a one-time expenditure. As a matter of fact, you heard this several times. We're talking LD1. We're not talking the one-time expenditures. We're not on the reserves. We're not on the undesignated fund balance. We're on LD1. Half a million dollars will go into the core budget. That's 50 cents on your tax rate right now, tonight. 80 people will tell you that. That's what's going to happen. So, that's not a one-time. That's what it is. That's the truth.
My name's Tom Gobieski. I live at 25 Shaker Woods Road. And I just wanted to know why, in, in this particular case, the vote is automatically done on paper, rather than with public view of exactly who's doing what?
State law.
Statute.
State law.
State law on LD one. It must be a written ballot to override LD one.
I figured there was a good reason. I was ignorant of it. I just wanted to make sure that was the case.
Is there any other discussion on Article forty-three? Clerks, are you ready to? Thank you. And again, please circle your yes or no on the ballot and return it to the box. Thank you.
Hold your card.
Thank you. Have all those voted? Is there anyone who still has a ballot out? All right, thank you.
Yes.
We have a, a yes vote of sixty-two to thirty-three. So Article forty-three passes. Thank you, Louise, and the clerks, for all your work. Article forty-four, shall the town, one, approve a capital project bond at an estimated cost of eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars, six hundred thousand dollars for sand-salt building, and two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for replacement engine? Two, to appropriate a sum not to exceed eight hundred and fif- eight hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars to fund the cost of this program, including cost of insurance? And three, to fund said appropriation, authorize the treasurer and chairman of the board of selectmen to issue a general obligation securities of the town of Raymond, Maine, including temporary notes in anticipation of sale thereof, in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed eight hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars, and the discretion to fix the dates, maturities, interest rates, denominations, calls for redemption, place, places of payment form, refunding, and other details of said securities, including execution and delivery of said securities on behalf of the town of Raymond, and to provide for the sale thereof is hereby delegated to the treasurer and chairman of the board of selectmen. There is an explanation and recommendations. Does any object, anyone object to me not reading the explanation and recommendations?
Moderator? I'd like to recommend the Budget Finance Committee recommendation.
I have a motion. Send it seconded. Is there any discussion on Article forty-four?
I second it for purposes of discussion. I guess my only question is, why wasn't this sent to the voters like our other bond last year? Why is it now that I believe sixty-two, thirty-three, ninety-five people will be making this decision tonight? You know, it'll probably be sixty-five, thirty-three, or something like that, sixty-two, thirty-three. So therefore, I guess my question is, last year, a two million dollar bond issued for the roads. This year, these bonds with the Field of Dreams could have been a two million dollar bond issue. Neither one going to the voters just coming to town meeting. So that's my question.
Mr. Moderator? I, I can't speak for the rest of the Budget Committee, but I voted to separate this article because there was a need on one committee, not committee, but department, and in my opinion, there was not a need on another department. The need, I felt, was for the replacement engine. And the want, and not necessarily a need, was on a sand-salt building. I do not believe that town needs one. It's, we, the current building that we have now has served our town very well. And it's for, I don't know, I've been here since nineteen ninety-one, so. And it's in pretty decent shape. It's been repaired. I realize that they had surplus product last year trucked in, sand. It was not indoors, but it was readily available. And, you know, town of Raymond didn't run out of sand. And for us to make an expenditure that we don't need is, you know, I, I can see the need for the, the fire department's engine. But as far as public works, sand and salt shed and pole barn and all that, we don't need that. Thank you.
Mr. Moderator? Just to give you a hint, last winter, all of you remember how cold it was? How impassable it was? And?
No, I don't.
Our salt and, our salt and sand was outside. It was so cold, even the salt and sand froze. So we used our public works crew, having to chop up the frozen sand to get it on a truck, so they could go out and sand the roads and make sure the roads were safe for everybody. It's time that we modernize this town a little bit. You know, the sand and salt building on Plains Road is falling down. It's not in great shape. It, it needs replacement so we can hold more salt and sand. So everyone that drives like, in a winter like we had this past winter, will be safe because the crew is out there spreading salt and sand and not chopping frozen sand out of the uncovered area.
Mr. Moderator, can I?
That's the, that's the operational issue, all true. The issue that's the important one, I think, to a lot of people, why a sand-salt building to begin with? When I started in this build, business, every town had a big pile of sand and salt outside. What did it do? It leached into the ground. So that's what we do. When it doesn't fit in the, in the, in the present shed, we pile it up outside. Operationally, of course, it freezes, it causes problems, doesn't go through the machinery. But if you go back to the fundamental reason why the sand-salt shed, it's because somebody said, hey, it might not be a great idea to put the salt into the groundwater. So we contain it in a sand-salt building. We need a larger one because we can't accommodate a year's sand and salt in the current building. Oh, and yeah, when you replenish the shed, good point from the chairman. You know, when you try to buy in the wintertime, that, that's not the, the greatest time to buy dry firewood. It's not the greatest time to buy fuel oil if you're looking for price. Our public works director is very creative. He does everything he can to reduce cost. And so when he can buy sand right, which is, interestingly, usually in the summertime, that's what we do. So we'll stock the, the sand-salt building, have our supply, good to go. No freezing, no leaching into the groundwater. Happy sand.
Can I? State law requires that sand and salt be indoors. You cannot have a mixture of sand and salt outside in, in the state of Maine. What the public works department did last year to, to get the, buy the sand at the right time, I have no problem with. And all went along, that pile of sand that was outside, that was untreated, was, you could break it down with a shovel, because I went there and got sand for my personal use for my driveway. And I didn't take the sand and salt because I chose not to put salt in my driveway. So it was very easy to, to get. They have a front-end loader over there. It's a wise thing to buy the sand, and I commend Nate for doing that. But in the past, we fill that shed up. And we've, we've never had issues. And the, the roads in Raymond, you know, I disagree, Joe. They, they weren't treacherous last winter because every time it, we had an inch of snow, public works was out there scraping it. So I think the roads in Raymond are, are safe. They're clean. It, it, it's not an overkill, but sometimes I think it is. But I'm not going to complain on, on good roads. But I still believe that we do not need a sand and salt building.
I'd like to just touch on this real quick. Right now, we can, we can stockpile just shy of two thousand yards inside the sand-salt building. On a ten-year average, we went through forty-two hundred yards of sand. This last winter, we passed the sixty-one hundred yards of sand. Stockpiling in the middle of the winter creates a huge problem. Stockpiling in the middle of the winter creates a huge problem for us. We had to pay extra to get a front-end loader in from P&amp;K, a bigger loader than what we normally have down there. We had three feet of frost in the pile of sand outside. We also have to get a screener to try to screen the chunks of sand to get them through the sander. What happens is, in the summertime, when you're mixing your sand, you get a good blend of salt mixture in the sand. In the wintertime, when it's frozen, you don't get that. You end up with frozen chunks that don't go through the screen, get plugged up in the sander. It is a huge problem. That only happens at 2 o'clock in the morning, when you're trying to sander a road. We were asked what we thought we needed. Sand-salt building was a big-ticket item. It's been on the burner for seven or eight years. It's one of the reasons why P&amp;K turned the winter sand purchase and stockpile over to us, because of the cost of them having to stockpile it in the middle of the winter. Here we are. Thank you.
Bruce Stockton, 118 Valley Road. As the chief of the Fire and Rescue Department, I can attest that there have been several occasions in the past winter and before where chunks of ice have jammed up Public Works sanders on us. I'm told that this is from having sand storage outside prior to pre-mixing it and putting it inside. This winter in particular caused two particular issues. One of them was a serious issue down on the backside of one of the lakes with a cardiac issue, and we couldn't get to the patient without lassoing a private contractor and having him fortunately sand for us. The other issue caused the fire call to be very delayed, making access to a house, again, on one of our lake roads, in a private road. But the same thing, we couldn't access it without sand. My vehicle was stuck in both occasions getting there. Public Works had to sand, and the private contractor had to do it. The latter case, we had to hand shovel a lot of it, just so we could make it in there. So, under cover storage, we'll keep the moisture content out prior to being premixed and keep this from occurring. Thank you.
Hi, Katrina. Thanks, sir. 33 Wamnuck Road. Thank you for all the information. It's informative. I do... Would like an answer, though, to the question of why this is being voted on tonight and not on the 10th. I'm curious about that.
Thank you.
It's the Selectmen's, you know, Budget Committee Selectmen. I think in the final analysis, the Selectmen have the ability to put it on a secret ballot, have it at town meeting. I think the idea was that there would be an opportunity for a lot of debate. Imagine that. And so, that was the idea, you know, and people could learn more about it and become informed and then vote. But the Selectmen can do it under law either way. There's nothing set in stone about how it's voted, as long as it's done in a legally called meeting. And this is the legislative body of the town. This is what we have, the town meeting. Anybody can come.
Diane Shively, Deep Cove Road. I guess as we're starting to think about whether we're going to fund bond issues and live with the day-to-day, year-to-year consequences of getting involved in bonds and the payments and the interest rate and all of that, I'm not sure. There were maybe 40 of us, 50 of us at the school board meeting last week that passed. And there's a lot of discussion about building a new middle school for the Raymond Wyndham School District. And that will probably be starting in the next year or two. And so, we've just passed LD1. We're going to go into these bonds, and we're going to have a new middle school purchase. So, just think long-term about where your money's going and how much money you can afford to go into your taxes. Thank you.
Bruce Sanford, Mountain Road, Raymond. Nathan, I'm just curious, how many square feet do you anticipate this sand-salt building is going to be?
We haven't gotten to the design plans yet on this. We're looking to store 5,000 yards. We were going to have to expend money to get any kind of design plans to find out how many square feet the building's going to be. And I wanted to come to the town meeting before I spent the money. And I didn't want to spend $5,000, $6,000, $7,000 and have it voted down. I'd rather know we're going to be able to do it and go forward. So, I don't have that right now.
Just as a tip, I just finished a couple of projects over in New Hampshire for the state police for patrol sheds. And a 6,500-square-foot sand-salt building over there was running about $65 a square foot, including modest site development, just for pad prep. A larger one, 13,000 to 15,000 square feet, was running about $50 a square foot. So, I don't know how the 600,000 number was arrived at, but you can kind of do some backtracking and kind of use those numbers as somewhat of a guide.
Okay, thank you.
Mike? Because the question has been moved to do this splitwise, I just wanted to let you know, $35,000 in issuance costs goes with something or is a separate third vote? I'm not sure how you want to handle it, so I... I was just looking at the...
You're going to pay the issuance cost...
No matter what.
One bond or two. The issuance costs, the rating agency costs from Standard and Poor's are going to be the same. The bank costs, all of that will be the same. So, if you approve one and not the other, you're in for that cost. If you approve both, you're in for that cost.
Right, but I wanted to make...
I think from a procedural standpoint, we will... I will, when we call Article 44, one, that we will list that with that cost.
Thank you, John.
And I'll explain shortly on what we're voting on, to be clear. Is there any other discussion? All right. It's been moved and seconded to accept the Budget Finance Committee recommendations to split the approval into two votes. So, we will take Article 44, one, and which is the $600,000 for the sand and salt building. And just to be clear, because of the issuance costs on the bonds are $35,000, what you'll be voting for, for Article one, is $635,000. That would include the issuance costs for the bonds. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor of 44, Article one? And those opposed? That passes, thank you. And now, we'll vote for Article 44, two, which is the $250,000 for the replacement engine. And because we accepted the $35,000 in the previous component of the article, it's just the $250,000. Is there any other discussion or questions prior to that vote? All those in favor? And opposed? Thank you.
Mr. Moderator? Before we adjourn, I would like to just take a minute and thank Louise Lester for all her years of coming to town meeting and making sure all the voters get their cards and do everything right. And I think the town, Louise, really appreciates everything you've done.
Make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Hi, Mr. McCarron.